This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and posted on the Municipal Bolton Board. All notices are on file with the Planning Board Secretary. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers as well as the rear of the building. I would ask anyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly put it on silent mode for the duration of the meeting. By the way, just as a reminder that this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. The other two things that I'd like to mention is the fact that there will, for any place that there is public question, that will be limited to three minutes, one round. Public comment will also be limited to three minutes, one round. So, please join me for Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
March 11, 2019, 7:00 PM, Councilwoman Rob Clayton.
Here.
And John Moore, Jim Henry.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Andrew Syfax.
Here.
Jennifer Sauer.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
Martha Crisack.
Here. There are no changes to you, Jennifer. Do we have the minutes for February 25? The only question, I had a question about the minutes. I know that Jennifer's name is here as in, as voting. I just want to make sure that she was allowed to. Barbara, or Jack?
Which one?
On, this was for the minutes, for the affordable housing element, because it was carried? I wasn't sure if, if her name would be allowed to be on this or not.
If she was at the meeting, that the minutes were there, came up?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
If she was at the meeting when, for that, that the minutes were four, yes.
Yes. Yes, she was at the meeting where the minutes were four. All right, so we're good.
There's a change.
Okay.
On maybe second page, third page? Third page. Where it says, I said it's a minimum of 10 years, but 20 and 50% are good, that should be 15, not 50.
15%.
I'm sure they would like us to say it's like 50% for housing.
Motion to approve the minutes with that change.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain, Barbara.
ABG Liquor Holdings.
I am waiting for my client to section his parking at Texan Avenue. We can just switch the two matters. We can do the resolution compliance on 545 Lake, and then I anticipate my client will be inside on Beer Garden, unless we can pick us.
Did everyone get the Beer Garden?
Yes. Okay, let's go.
All right.
545?
Yes.
As a procedural matter, Jennifer, you listened to the paper, the meeting of September 24, 2018, and I gave you a certification sign.
Yes.
So, you should have.
I think I also listened to it.
You.
You were there.
You were there. You voted in favor of that residency.
Okay.
Well, that's good. Okay, so, all right, thank you. I'll get a certification for you as well.
As the board is aware, a res...
Why don't we just continue?
Let's go.
This is, let me answer my appearance. Andrew J. Caras from Fox Rochelle, we have the applicant. As the board is aware, a resolution had been entered with regard to the project at 545 Lake Ave relative to the parking, temporary parking for the residents of Cookman on the 545 lot moving over to the 607 lot. There was a condition that was entered with regard to the resolution. It was Condition 6 of that resolution that required a letter be obtained for the board from the city attorney of Asbury Park indicating that the approval of the use of the 607 Madison Lot by the residential occupants of 550 Cookman Ave does not violate any temporary parking agreement in effect at this time if any within CBD area. As I'm sure the board is aware, I could not get a letter from the city attorney or from Redevelopment Council. They refused to provide it. The city council refused, I guess, to authorize them to do it, but whatever happened, they refused to provide. That corresponds consequently, I'm back here tonight to seek an amendment to that resolution that redacts that particular condition. And that's what we're here for tonight. There's one main thing the board should be aware of.
Excuse me, Ian. Could you be able to hand me this?
Sure. There's a letter dated February 22, 2019, that I had written to the board attorney Mr. Circo, that is a position paper relative to our appearance here tonight. If I can have that marked as A1 for identification. And as that is being marked, one thing that the board should be aware of is that there was an amendment to the CBD redevelopment plan, its ordinance number 2730, that designated certain properties within the CBD areas permissible for parking lots and structures. And what was specifically identified are those lots that are stated as properties to be acquired on the CBD plant. The lot at 607 is one of those properties for which parking lots and structures in it is so identified as a lot to be acquired or may be acquired in the CBD plant. With that being said, all we're asking for is redaction of that particular condition. To my knowledge, there is no existing agreement with the city of Asbury Park, interim parking agreement that applies. There was one that had been enforced years ago. I believe it expired in 2011, 2012. With that, there is nothing then that exists, no agreement, that would affect that parking lot prohibited use as temporary parking for the residents at 550 Cookman. So with that, I ask that that particular condition be redacted, removed, and move on from there.
All right, Jack?
Sure, and we'll get Michael's one as well, as Michael and I both worked on this one.
Please, your testimony here, your least proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and that will be the truth.
Yes.
State your name and your affiliation with the city.
Michael Sullivan, Clark, Hitts, Will Care.
Thank you.
Mr. Caras is correct. The, I did the research. The interim parking agreement died either in 10 or 12, was never renewed. So, the clause in the, in the resolution says, if there, if any, and there is none. So, there's, there's absolutely no prohibition against using that parking lot. So, we can redact it. Michael, I can jump in.
Well, I can just say that in looking into this, I confirmed with the city planner that there is no agreement in effect this month.
So, are we looking at, you'd mentioned something about Item 6? I thought it was Item 15.
Well, the original approval back from pre-18 was Number 15. Then when they came in in September, addressed the issue, in that resolution, it turns out to be Number 6.
And can, I, I'm sorry, I don't have that, the copy of Number 6, the language of Number 6?
I can read it to you.
Okay. If it's short enough.
Yeah, this board further finds that in order for the applicant to comply with the terms of Condition 15 of the original approval, the applicant shall submit a letter to the board from Redevelopment Council to the city of Asbury Park indicating that the approval of the use of 607 Madison by the residential occupants of 550 does not violate any temporary agreement in effect at this time if any for the CBD area. And there is no interim parking agreement in effect whatsoever. So, there's really no reason to get that letter.
So, the, so, I just want to ensure that, that, that the item that states that we need to have a plan or something that shows us, and I believe that you had this before, Andy, is that how many cars are in 550 now? How many cars are proposed for, are already at Madison, 607 Madison? And that you indeed can fit all those cars during construction in 607 Madison?
We had hearings on that.
I understand, I'm just saying that that's, we, we have that.
Yes.
And we are, and all that's good, and this, if we do approve this, Jack?
Yes.
That means that, that, that this Item 15 still holds true because you have, you have, the, the numbers make sense, and everybody will move from 550 into 607 Madison during construction. And the only thing that we're redacting is the fact that we needed a letter from someone.
Yeah, we thought we might have needed a letter just in case there was an interim parking.
Just in case there was interim parking. Okay.
Yeah, and the written resolution for the approval of compliance on September 24th to 28th, in fact, addresses the numbers, location, quantity of spaces of the lot.
Okay. Okay. All right, does the, does the board have any questions that they would like to ask regarding this? No? Yep? No? Do our professionals have any questions?
Nope.
Professionals? No?
No.
Does the, does the public have any questions? No? Okay. Do the, we're moving along from the questions so quickly. Okay. All right, can I have a motion to open public comment on this?
Move it.
Second.
Anybody from the public would like to comment on this? Okay.
Move the close.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the request?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Jack, can I? I can't.
No, you voted against the, you voted against this in September.
Right, yeah.
I move that we amend the resolution to remove this.
To remove that requirement.
Condition, yes.
Remove that condition.
I guess second vote if you have my call.
Yes.
And Jennifer, seconded?
Yes.
And just let us know who's allowed.
I'm just trying to figure out who's allowed.
I can tell you.
All right, good.
Okay. Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Robert Crisack.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rob Clayton.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
Jennifer Sauer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
One down.
One down.
Two more to go.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's go back to Beer Garden.
All right, let's go back to ABG Liquor Holdings. Next on the agenda.
Andrew Caras again from Fox Rochelle.
Pardon me for being late.
Trey, we moved along.
Thank you.
We're here, what is essentially a continuation of a prior resolution that had been approved by the board with regard to certain uses for the Beer Garden. There's a resolution that had been entered or adopted by this board on December 10th of 2018 relative to Christmas Market and also with regard to igloos on the roof. There are other uses that were being proposed, and that's what we're here for tonight, in the sense that was bifurcated, those particular uses on that night, and the remaining uses were back here tonight. I would call my client, Jennifer Lambert, to come testify, who's right next to me, with regard to the additional uses, the times when those uses would occur, and the nature of those uses.
Would you please raise your hand? You swear upon testimony, your testimonies proceeding to be the truth, the whole truth, and that will be the truth?
Yes.
State your name through the record.
Jennifer Lambert.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, May. Ms. Lambert, you have previously testified at the original hearing on this matter with regard to certain uses or additional uses for the Beer Garden, am I correct?
Yes.
And you had testified with regard to the Christmas Market, also with regard to igloos, which there's a resolution adopted by the board approving those uses, correct?
Correct.
Now, there are additional uses that you are seeking to be able to, your requested permission to use for the Beer Garden during the course of the year, am I correct?
Correct.
And you have a list of those uses that you have previously submitted to the board, correct?
Correct.
What I'm going to do, I'm going to mark that as A1 for identification. I'm going to ask that you go through what I'm going to mark as A1 for identification of those additional uses.
So, me? Okay. So, some of these things are done through the Special Events Committee with the city, so I didn't, so I can just go right through them.
Right, we, we should just know which ones those are, so that we don't, we don't have to really agree with them.
Correct. So, igloo season, we already dealt with. Nobukuran is a race, so that's through the city. Levislough is a race, that's through the city. These are charitable races that we do throughout the year. So, the next big one is the Spring Market. And the Spring Market dates that are on this, I would like to amend them to April 14th to May 12th, because we looked through it, and it makes more sense to do it a little bit earlier, around that time of year. And the Spring Market is featuring sustainable and half, handcrafted items. We also, this will be our third or fourth year that we'll be doing Earth Day Festival with Surf Rider. It's a great festival. So, that will be during that time period. And the reason it's five weekends is because Easter weekend, Earth Day, we're going to celebrate on that Saturday, and there'll be only one day of market for that weekend, because it doesn't make sense to do one on Easter. So, that's the Spring Market. It's very similar to our Holiday Market, the same setup with the tents and some live music, which we don't do as much of in the Holiday Market, because the weather should be nicer. Focus again on sustainability and handcrafted, locally handcrafted items.
And, and can I, can I give you like some idea of what the timing of that is, meaning time of day that is?
12 to 6.
12 to 6?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if we could just add that to.
Yeah, 12 to 6.
To these 12 to 6? Okay.
Is that all weekend during the week?
Just Friday, Saturday, I mean, Saturday, Sunday.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we decided to do Fridays. We didn't think it really made sense.
Okay.
Since this is, some of these anecdotes are not in, in what you've got, I'm going to identify, I just want to make sure, I'll reiterate them back to you, make sure I have the right information to add to your resolution. The Spring Market is a non-special events city?
Correct, it's on my roof.
All right, and that's 44 through 512?
That would be what makes sense on this calendar year, but that time period, depending on the flow, everything.
Annual basis, and the hours are 6 to, excuse me, 12 to 6:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays.
Correct.
Right, and that should also stay within the guidelines of any of the noise statutes that we have?
Correct.
And we should adhere to those, as always.
Okay.
Okay, should we move on to the next?
Yep.
Spring Beer Run is the city. Memorial Day, Labor Day. Basically, I would like to keep the tent on my lower deck during the summer. That's the thing. That's the only thing. Just keep it, like the tent that I use now, that where the toy drive was, I would just like to be able to keep that up in the summer to protect the musicians. So, that's why I listed that. Otherwise, I might just put it up for those particular weekends, because I spend a lot more money on the bands for those weekends, so knowing that, you know, they have different needs, that would be great.
Take care of the band.
Yeah, take care of the band. So, the next one is the Rooftop Yoga, which is four to six Monday evenings. Their brand is sponsored, they're free, and they're with live music by local musicians. And we do four to six, because usually it rains for at least one or two. So, we usually get four in a year. They're two to three weeks spread apart over the course of the summer, and that's all it is.
So, so you're saying that from June?
June to end of September, somewhere in there, we get four to six of them in.
To the end of September.
Weather permitting and brand sponsorship permitted. We also serve, this year, we featured kombucha that was made in Freehold. So, there's like a, you can have your virgin kombucha, or you can put a little something else in it, but people really seem to enjoy it. And we get a huge turnout for it, huge, like 125 people showing up. So, it's a very, very liked event on a Monday night, which helps business. So, the next one would be Music Festival, which I think we kind of decided when we were speaking last time that that doesn't really matter. It's not like I'm doing a see here now, it just means on like a certain day, I might want to do women in the area that rock or something. And I, you know, I don't do hard rock on my roof, it more likely would be an acoustic kind of event. But being we were, I was coming before you, I wanted to be said that I would like to do this, so.
But your resolution, the group resolution allows you to have live music on the roof up until a certain time.
Correct. So, last time, I think, it's still on this list, so I'm touching on it, but last time, I think you guys said you're permitted to.
Right, you're permitted to, just based on the, the timing restriction, so that should really come off.
Yeah, so it can jump past that.
Right.
Family Pride, it's just, we're going to do, we're going to celebrate, celebrate pride for families. Lots of same-sex couples with kids, lots of hetero couples that support the gay community, and nobody else is doing it in town, and I really think it fits my brand. So, at that, I just wanted to be able to have some, some friends of mine have the boardwalk games for, that they use in Spring Lake, you know, throw a ball through, something like that, just something fun for the families and the kids to do. It's nothing really crazy, so carnival-style games with bands and, you know, maybe a little, maybe a kid's band or something fun, something from League House. So, that's that. Columbus Day Weekend in the Street is the city. Oktoberfest Beer Run is the city. And the last one is My Haunted Graveyard on the Lower Deck. It's, I may use the tent you were there, but basically, we did it this year with styrofoam grave tombstones and a real coffin, and scared people. And this, it's just one or two weekends spaced around when Halloween falls. And it's free and fun. So, that's it. That's, that's really, oh, the one thing we didn't, I don't think was on here, but we talked about last time, was just an occasional rooftop movie. I don't remember if we took it off for a reason or not, but we discussed it. But it's like once or twice a year.
It would just have to, we would have to know the timing of it. Meaning the timing of, you know, because of the noise issues.
Yeah, I'm always, I'm very respectful of that. It would always be within noise frame time, you know?
I think you cut off live music at 10.
We cut off live music at 9:45, because if I cut off at 10, Ocean Grove calls.
Depending, and I don't know much about how, where you would do the movie, I guess that my concern would be, is that Who Lives?
Well, let's see if this man would let me hang a sheet off his building.
Right, right, it's kind of like, where are you hanging the sheet? And is the projector going into his window?
Lower deck. It's, it's lower deck and it's office space.
Lower deck, office space, not in anybody's window.
No.
We're good.
Carter's.
Okay. Okay. So, you wanted to add movies?
Yeah.
Can you give us?
How often?
Give us some more specifics on that.
Um, so, like, well, the one that we always want to show is Beer Fest, because we, you know, Das Boot, to make sense. So, just things that would make sense with our brand. I'm not going to start showing Disney movies.
The one with Joe Bon Jovi or the old one?
I don't, you have to ask my staff.
Because it'll matter, right?
Yeah, it doesn't really matter. I don't, you know, I think the old one, but.
Like, what timeframe are we talking about?
Well, a movie would be, would be.
Time of year.
In season, when I can use the roof. Beer Fest would be close to Oktoberfest, probably, you know?
And how many times during the course of the year?
No more than four at very most, and you're talking the whole high season.
About no more than once a month.
So, we're saying like June through October, we're talking about?
No more than once a month.
March through, May through October?
Uh, May is a little cold.
We need to have some, I just.
Okay, let's say May through October.
May through October.
It's weather permitted if I, you know?
Okay.
That gives me flexibility.
You don't charge for the movies?
No, I don't charge for anything.
That's what I got from your discussion.
Except for beer, yes. I have to say the pancakes and pretzels. All of our events are typically free, they're meant to drive business in.
Right, right.
You know, unless it's charitable and there's somebody else involved, but.
Is the intent of this resolution to be a, to approve these uses on a perpetual basis, or is it? Okay. So, as we come up with the conditions, I think we have to think about things that we put in place are flexible enough for the business to move around, but also protect us in terms of long-term.
Because, because I was just thinking that, just so that we know the span of dates, and we have some idea of what times you're talking about, and that you're adhering to the noise concerns, would kind of give us, you know, the guidelines around pretty much every one of these, I would guess.
Yeah.
Does that sound right, Mike?
Yeah.
All right, so, it seems as though to me, and I don't know what, does the board have anything else that they want to say regarding these?
No.
Well, in terms of, I know you said that the fire marshal is there every time, but, to check, but I, do, we, everything we approve is always subject to fire code.
Cool.
Do we need to ask, I mean, is this like, that it ever be inspected, or?
Well, the, well, the igloos are.
There are two concerns. I think one, yes, the igloo, and you already have shown like, you know, a lot of discretion when there are high winds or anything else. So, the safety of having temporary structures up there, but the second thing is, do we need to put any limitation, like if these temporary structures, it's like a stage through the summer is fine, but do we need to put some limitation on like how long a temporary structure can actually stay up?
I mean, I'm only asking for within these time periods.
So, the longest time period right now is like between Memorial and Labor Day?
Three months.
Pretty much, usually around three months, except for the movie, which is May through October. But the structures are no more, no more than three months.
I just think we want to, so Michael was saying, like, you know, do we want to put any limitations? We just want to protect against temporary structures becoming permanent structures, like penthouse.
Right, yeah.
It would require an amendment to the cyclical.
Correct.
Make it permanent.
Okay.
And there's only one music festival in September? Is it one day?
I don't, like, I don't really know what the music festival is, it's just something that we've always wanted to do, and it's, it's, it's nothing really much different than I'm already permitted to do. It's, yeah.
Right, and I, I think, I think if we agree to allow a tent on the stage area from Memorial Day to Labor Day, maybe we extend that from May 1st to September 30th, then that covers all bases, you could basically have live music anytime.
Within the confines of the original.
Within the confines of the original approval, so.
So, May, May 2.
You could have ten music festivals.
May 2, October 1st, pretty much.
May, yeah, May 1st to October 1st would be.
Okay. Well, that would actually cover a couple of things, then, for, for you to be able to have the tents up to, for that period of time.
Where's the?
It's the only, it's only the, there's only two tents that I would want through the summer. One on the stage and a small one over my bar, which, I have a seggerator bar down there, like a satellite bar. That I can even do with a Pilsner or a Calten, that can come up and down if it needed to. But the other ones, I don't need for more than the markets, because they, they don't make sense for me to leave up for any reason. So, the, the one to be over the stage for the summer would be great, and the one over the bar, it doesn't really matter so much, but the, the Holiday Market and the Spring Market and the igloos are these dates, you know?
All right, so it sounds as though, maybe, Jack, you have a couple of things here that, that have to be, get a little specific, so, do you want me to take a shot at it? All right, so it sounds as though maybe, Jack, you have a couple of things here that, uh, that have to be, get a little specific, so do you want me to take a shot at it?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, so the first one that we really have is, um, April fourteenth to May twelfth, because we already did the igloos.
Is it April fourth or?
April fourteenth.
I, I would suggest we, we do April first to May thirtieth, because it may change next year, right?
April first?
Oh, so you're looking, well, yeah, cause it's based around how the calendar falls, so to make those dates exact is, you know, you could say no more than five week, weekends.
Right. I don't think we have to be that specific. I think we know it.
In this period, no more than five weekends is fine.
So it's four, one, to five thirty?
Four, one to five thirty, uh, with the, for their, they're being held from twelve to six P M.
Right, Saturday.
Saturday and Sunday, right?
Okay.
Keep me honest. All right, well, Memorial Day to Labor Day, we're talking about the tent, but actually, we were saying May first to October first for the tent.
Great.
Okay, uh, for the rooftop yoga, June first to September first, or?
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth?
Still get a nice.
All right, so we'll say October, June first to October first, okay?
October first?
Rooftop yoga, four to six P M, Monday evenings. There will be music?
Four to six P M, it's, it's usually at seven P M.
Oh, four to seven?
A set, no, it's two hours at seven P M. It's like an hour and fifteen minutes less.
Seven to nine.
All right, so what do we say? Seven to nine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Four to six and seven to nine?
No.
No, just seven to nine.
Four to six came from that. I think that's somewhere.
It's on here.
Typo.
Typo.
I think, I think you said four to six dates.
Four to six times.
Oh!
That's what I, I apologize. Four to six, Monday evenings. Apologize.
We're still going for June first to October first, uh, Monday evenings, seven to nine P M, uh, and there might be music.
Yes, but soothing.
Soothing.
So it'd be a maximum of six events?
Maximum of six.
Four to six.
Four to six, yeah, maximum of six, that always rains one or two out of it.
All right, the June Pride Weekend, whenever that is on any particular year, carnival games, that's within, whenever, we're kind of, we're, timing of that is probably, what, until? You're still doing it until like ten, ten's your latest.
Yeah, it's, it's usually a Sunday, right? Yeah, so.
So, so we need, do we need time on that, or is it just that weekend, uh, Jack?
Depends on how specific you want to be.
I mean, you know that it has to be over by ten P M, whatever it is.
Can you leave it open for the weekend? Cause it's Pride Weekend, and I think it'd be nice to have family things to do for the weekend.
Absolutely, it's for the weekend.
More than likely, I'll be focusing on the Sunday.
So why don't we just say like, two days in June?
Two days, two days in June.
Yeah.
Two days in June.
Thank you.
And ends at ten P M, like all music does.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, the next two were for city, so then we have the Hal- Halloween Weekend. Um, that's really nothing that's going to happen there outside of, you know, the tents are gonna be there anyway. No, the tents are done, so we just have a haunted graveyard.
Yeah, I mean, like, it's one, it's one or two weekends, and if I took one tent to make it scary to walk through, that'd be the most that I would do.
Okay, so we're saying two weekends in October. Two weekends.
That's on the lower deck?
On the lower deck.
It's really cute.
Two weekends, one lower, on lower deck, at the most.
Yeah.
Okay?
It's really, really cute.
Okay, and then from May first to October first, rooftop movies. Uh, most four times, you said?
Well, Andy said make it one a month, but I can't imagine I'm gonna get.
Now I have to count. Six, that's six, that's six, one, one a month?
One a month, yeah.
One a month, all right, most, most one a month?
Yeah.
Okay.
No later than, no later than ten P M.
No later than ten.
Yeah, that's fine. Can I ask for one thing? If, if the, if the, can't make sentences, if the haunted rooftop might want to require like one tent or something, can we just leave the tent thing through October thirty-first instead of October first? Is that cleaner?
Wow.
Would that be okay?
Cause we have the tent is up until Labor Day.
No, we changed it to October first. If we make it October thirty-first, then, you know.
Or November first.
November first.
That would be great.
November first, okay. You got that, Jack?
Yep.
Okay, I think that covers it.
Cool.
All right, um, any comments from the board? Or questions from the board? Comments from the board? Uh, any questions from the public? Anyone? No? Uh, motion to, uh, to open public session, please, for question, for comments.
Move it.
Okay, anyone? Yes, sir.
From here?
Sure. Um, actually, if it's comment, it has to be up there, sorry. Can we do the? That's right, it's a, it's a three-minute limit, just, cause I believe that you weren't here when we, uh, announced that.
Oh, yeah. Wait, which hand?
Right.
Your right hand. Sorry. I do. Ernest Midoli, four hundred Thelae Drive, Asbury Park. I, I just want to say that, uh, I think when I come here and I hear the Beer Garden and their proposals, I'm very impressed with how open it is, how forthright, and I would say fair to the community. However, by contrast, I, I'm not sure I think it's too fair. The competitors of the Beer Garden seem to kind of just wing it. So, I don't know, could the city somehow figure out a way to make sure that everybody has to do their due diligence like the Beer Garden? And I think it's admirable what the Beer Garden does. Comes here, talks specifically, represented by a lawyer, make sure everybody understands. And we've had years of seeing, it's, uh, Beer Garden does exactly what they say. But there's, uh, what, fifty other clubs in Asbury? I, I'm not sure to what drummer they beat. I can't, I can't seem to find out. Like, when I see an event or people up on a roof or throwing beer bottles off or something, I say, well, who approved that? That's my comment.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, move to close public session, um, public, uh, comment session.
Move it.
Sorry.
Okay. Hi. Can I get a motion for, uh, the adoption of the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Rockling?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yay. Nice to see ya.
Nice to be seen.
All right, we can do that one. Five twenty-seven, you're here for this one? You may not have been, not for that, it was carried from here. You're doing it again. I'm just, so you can. It's, it's just a matter that you're gonna have to consult.
It's a two.
Go ahead.
I'm a retired firm boss, Rochelle, and half the applicant. This is a continuation of a hearing that we previously had with regard to this property. I made the properties located at five twenty-seven Bangs Ave. Lot three one oh one lots nine and ten, just for those boards' application, were in the CBD zone, CBD mixed-use district. Existing near a mixed-use building, we're seeking to add, to renovate that building, add a few floors of residential housing on top of the parking lot in the back as part of the proposed use. The question, or a lot of the questions last time before the tour centered around the architectural image, the renderings and how this was going to look. We had gotten through last time, the architectural testimony, the engineering testimony, went through the reports, but the board had some very insightful and very good comments with regard to the design of the building. Um, as a result, we went before the Design Review Committee, went through with them in terms of some alternative designs, and we're here to present to the board tonight an alternative design and alternative architectural plans, um, with regard to that design. That being said, I'll call our architect, Mr. Carvillo, testify. He did testify last time.
Yeah, we've got to lose one, no, no, it's a foundational. I do.
Can you hit the record?
Sure, Jose Carvillo, C A R, B S N Boy, A L L O.
Thank you.
Okay. Just, no, other way. Yeah.
I, you went back and you, after we met with the Architectural Review Committee, you revised the plans in accordance with comments and the discussion that we had, am I correct?
That is correct.
And on the easel, there are revised plans. Doug, you came up.
That, that is correct.
All right, we're on, I believe, A A seven, can I clear it?
I'm sorry.
We, we have these.
That's different.
We have them.
Yes.
Just redesigned the building, and this is the final that we came up with, and that's the one that we're proposing to the board tonight.
When we went before the Design Review Committee, we went through a certain size of windows, and some. And when we were before the board with, uh, certain plans, the discussion was that the windows were too big, they were a little bit overwhelming for what was being proposed. So we came back and we reduced the size of those windows, utilizing the same type material. We'll go through that with the test, Mike. Just reducing the size of the windows, keeping colors a little bit different, we'll go through that, but design is the same as we had discussed. Carvillo, let's work that as A A seven.
I have to take a look at the Marshall page, uh, in case we change anything.
And here's revision date on those plans?
Right, it's two twenty.
Why don't you go through the plans and the revisions that you made following up on that meeting we had.
Certainly, at, at the last board meeting, uh, we presented a circular building, we, to say that it wasn't more than seven five in the board. What, what Jack, the pain was, was a darkened pole, and the upper floor actually overhung the fourth floor, overhung the third floor, uh, and the board just thought it was a little bit too much. So from that, uh, a little comments, what we did is, we went back, we like, we done, uh, I succeed here, and eliminated, we overhanded on the fourth story, so that the, uh, third and fourth floors are now on the same plane. Same plane on the front, same plane on the side. Uh, we went to the, uh, Technical Review Committee and the Design Committee, and there were a couple more comments that were made at that committee, and we've now incorporated those comments, uh, the, uh, way that we see beautiful. Uh, first thing is, actually, uh, we did talk about the materials, uh, it's a, um, fiberglass three to fours material, it's a panel, uh, it's called, it's manufactured by a company called Vinci Hav, and it's the illumination series, which is a panel that was, uh, designed to compete with metal panels. It does not let sheen do it, uh, and it's, it's really a clean panel. The second thing we did is we like, we got the windows, uh, just to maximize the color of the panels a little bit more, uh, so that we would have a, a unit on, uh, the side that would serve as a backdrop for the, uh, building, the existing building, which, uh, you know, just, we have the, that's it. Uh, second topic that was made to the board, uh, was we had to break, uh, down the, uh, the first floor towards the rear of the building in the new, uh, building, and what we did is we actually, uh, took that break out, and we extended the, uh, the wood, um, style paneling that we had on the upper level. We carried it down to the lower level. This was done just so that, um, basically just emphasized that the existing building is being left as it is. We're not altering the building, we're not adding to the building, we're not increasing the height of the building, so the building remains as it is. And, and by actually carrying, um, that wood, um, siding to the, to, towards the back, it actually emphasizes that fact. Um, the, the last thing was, uh, if we go back to the rear elevation, so what we did is we carried this material, which is also an illumination, but it's now more monotone, uh, just to differentiate it from the, uh, from the front of the building. We carried that material around the building to the other side. Uh, we eliminated, we had, um, some hardywood siding, that's been eliminated, so we do have the same look that the building has, inner front that is, uh, exposed to the, uh, the streets. We have that towards the back of the building, so we do want to have it from the other street in the back. You see a, a finished building that, uh, a, uh, like I said, just a cheaper building that, uh, is on the back. Uh, those are the basic changes, um, that we made to the, uh, to the building. Uh, the floor plus, we made the same. Again, the only difference is that the fourth floor now matches the, uh, the third floor, uh, aside from down on the other floor, by the way, we made the same.
Now, we're requesting as part of this application, a height variance, am I correct?
That, that is correct.
And that height variance, am I correct, is necessitated by the fact that we want to keep the original design elements on the existing building, correct?
That, that is correct.
And why is that? Explain that to the board.
Well, uh, when we pull this back, and if we go back to where the roof line is, uh, this third floor, the two floors are actually, um, hidden behind the parapet. This is a, a pretty high parapet, so we wanted to give it some height. Uh, also, as, as a, um, a matter of proportion to the building, we felt that the building needed, the addition needed to be a little higher, uh, than what was allowed by, um, the, uh, the zoning, just so that we could, uh, present a real backdrop to this building. Uh, so I think that's what we're using by, by doing that, uh, actually, actually works very well.
And as a result, by making those changes, you're able to keep your comments on the original building, be able to then present the additional, uh, floors that you're proposing, whereby it fits within the schemes what is being proposed, am I correct?
That, that is correct.
And as a result, you're requesting a height variance for, for, let me try to get it right.
Fourth floor.
Fourth.
We're gonna have the four feet, four inches, correct? That is correct. We're at forty-five, we have forty-four, I'm sorry, forty-nine and four.
Are there any other changes to the plans aside from what you've just discussed?
No, these, these are all the changes that we contemplated, the changes that were from the board, uh, it's changes that were from the Design Review Board, uh, and they have been incorporated on these, uh, these buildings.
I believe with regard to the comments and the reports, we addressed everything last time, engineering and architectural wise. There was only really certain design elements that needed to be addressed.
The, uh, west facade and, and the rear, like, and the, the, the windows that we have here show a number of windows, but it doesn't look like they're on, they're drawn. Is it just that they're not clear to see from here? No, those, those windows are the same as you have there, the windows themselves haven't, haven't changed.
Oh, we just can't see it?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's just that, what we did is we wanted to make sure the material, uh, was not, I don't want to say it was shattered, but, uh, I just wanted to make sure that the windows and the material work together, so we like, we, yes, the same windows.
Okay. But it's the window frames, though, are now in a light as opposed to glass.
Such a contrast.
Right, I got you. I mean, one, one of the things I would wanted to do is just to have the material, uh, be more prominent than anything else, and that's why the windows were made smaller, so we got more material, and the windows actually were, like, in depth so that, you know, they wouldn't, uh, outdo, as an example, the, uh, the panel itself.
Have, have there been any other considerations, um, like we discussed in the, during the design review regarding parking?
Uh, that's a question more freely open than myself.
No, the, we'll pay into the fund as permitted by the ordinance. Um, we've gone through the parking, garage, and the layout. I know there's some comments, made some revisions to the last time, but the extent that there's gonna be parking on the site, there's been testimony.
All right, I'd like to, uh, personally, I'd like to review that again. I'd like to go through that again, uh, regarding the parking. So if we could go through with how much parking exists today, how much you're going to be providing, and what the gap is, that would be helpful.
I'm sorry, I have one question, but I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
About the windows, sorry, you just flipped it. Um, are the, did the size actually change, or is it the material around the windows? Did the window size actually change, or is it the, the material around the window?
The, the, the window sizes became a little small, just so that we had more of the material you showed, uh, the facade itself, so the windows became a little small.
Okay, it's just hard to see from here, but I was, um, looks the same. Yeah, I mean, it does, the size looks the same from here, but it's far.
It was one.
It's the same thing, so you said you changed the height, right, to give a little bit more clearance?
So you can see.
Second. Floor, which makes sense, but there's no change in the rendering height?
No, no, there isn't. It's, it's, this is the height that matches the height of the building.
Okay. And just then to clarify, but also the four point four inches was in the proposal that was previously reviewed.
That was submitted last time, yes.
That is correct.
Can I ask a question about the building?
Yeah.
Do you have a rendered, uh, elevation of the building, the, uh, front, Bangs Avenue?
Why should I identify that?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is joint A three, uh, it shows the overall elevation of the building, uh, this is the full elevation of, uh, of the building. This is the same ranking that you saw before, uh, but this is the. Different plotter, is that why the color's different? It, it's some kind of stuff in there, yeah, it's, it's the windows that's different, the other colors are the same. Um, one of the things that I, that I'm getting from this, that I think I'm receiving is that's the.
One of the things that I'm getting from this, that I think I'm receiving is that the structural elements in the existing facade do not line up with the new column lines of the top. Is that the case?
That is the case.
Why can they not align? It's discordant to me.
Well, they, a couple reasons. The first reason is, given the layout requirements, and the way we find out. The second thing is.
The apartments aren't there yet. The apartments aren't there yet.
No, yeah, the floor. The second reason is architecturally, there's no reason for the two minutes to line up perfectly. As long as it's a certain rhythm to the windows up and down, the windows out and up. So I, from an architect's point of view, I believe that this is a successful solution.
One of the, one of the things that concerns me is the scale of the texture of the cladding in the upper. It draws a lot of attention to it. The visual weight's been brought down quite a bit.
Right.
Because it's a lighter color. But the Lego style of the, of the cladding is jumping out. And when I look at buildings like the Fifth Avenue Pavilion, where they've used lighter bricks, but not all the same color, because it's finer, you get more of a matrix of color, and it's more subtle. And I think that using smaller modular would be, would draw less attention to that. But still, when you got up close to it, it would look very cool.
This is, this is the panel, this panel, that's the size of the panel, inch and inches. I don't know if they can make a different sized panel, we could always look into that.
The last thing that I am concerned about is that the relationship between that color palette that's happening up there needs to be linked somehow to the bottom. And I think what you're, what you're going for is the cast stone surrounds that are down on the bottom of the caps, and you're trying to match that. So at some point, you're going to have to make a decision about what's the best match for that. These renderings aren't going to exactly get it, but you're going to have to make that decision.
I respectfully disagree with you. I think the fact that you went to a color that is different from down at the bottom is wanting to make sure that the existing building always was seen as the existing building. Not as, if you start, you know, matching brick colors and panel colors and that, then you start losing that, you know, you start losing the building.
I'm not suggesting that you use the bricks, I'm suggesting that if you have, I don't know how many colors are represented in that cladding you're using, there seems to be like three or four.
It's in the light gray.
Right, but that, if, if that cladding around the existing surrounds, or surrounds, is a warm cream or a warm limestone, one of those colors should be, and they should all be in the warm range.
So take one, the color on the bottom, just take one of those elements and get it up top.
That's it, not the red, I'm talking about the surrounds, the cast stone.
Back to me.
And, and I've seen people, I've seen projects with these panels, and they're supposed to be in the warm or the cool spectrum. And they come out and they're in the wrong spectrum, in the wrong, and it looks very jarred. So that's one of the conditions I would want to see on this.
Pick an element of that.
That would be explored in that materials board, just worked in.
I just had a question about the, you had mentioned that the EPA wood planks now extends around the side as opposed to the, what we have on this plan, it's a change from what we have here.
What's the material?
This is the same panel, the same company, but it's a panel that's made out to look like this. And it does have a texture.
I was wondering, it says EPA Brazilian wood planks, it's not actually EPA?
No, it's not really EPA.
Okay.
Anything else from the board before we get into the parking question? You want to finish that off while we're, add anything from the professionals before we get into the parking question? No? Anything from the public? Any questions from the public regarding this application and what was just discussed? Three minute limit.
Sorry for the voice, earnest me no only for on the Teal Lake Drive. Why, why red?
There's no red.
No, no.
That's not the current drawing.
Oh, that's, we're not talking about that?
No, well, it's not the current drawing.
That's not, they meant provisions from that drawing.
It doesn't have any red.
Oh, what do I have, an old one?
That's an old one.
Here it is, it's here.
Sam, who'd you comment for?
We anticipated what your comments were.
All right, any, any, any comments from, we're going to open up comments for the public? Open public session for comments for what was discussed, not including parking? Anything that was discussed? Open up public comment? No? Nope? Okay. All right, let's get into the parking then. Can we go over that, please? What I'm most interested in is how many spaces, obviously, the, how many spaces exist today? How many are required? And where the parking is actually going to be? That's what I'm interested in, if you don't mind, I believe that that's in the planner's report. Sure.
Michael Sullivan, Jacob and Ford, please. Jason Fitzgerald, Board Engineer.
Okay, if we could just go through the whole process of how many there are, how many are required, and where what's proposed? So starting with what's on Lot 10 today? It's on the planner's report. 2.4.
Are you addressing that to the planner or?
No, I know what the planner said, I've got that. I'm asking, I just wanted, I want to discuss what the numbers are, if everybody agrees what the numbers are. So we're starting out with Lot 3, we're eight spaces, Lot 10, 23 spaces. Plus, there is an extra space on the street that you will be removing, correct? So that's 32 spaces. If you're required to have 62, I believe, is that true? 63? Okay, we're required to have 63 spaces, okay? And how many, and that is also including one space that is on the street, which you will be removing, right? So what is the actual, how many are you actually going to be providing?
15.
All right, you'll be providing 15. So we are, you're providing 15 plus taking away one from the street, correct?
I believe that's what the question.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know if that was.
Or did we decide we're not losing a space on the street?
I don't think we are losing a space. I don't think we are.
Did we decide we're not losing the space on the street? Yes?
I think that the special was we're going to slide down.
Yeah, one of the spaces.
Okay, okay, so we don't have to remove that.
So we lose none on the street.
Right, so we have 31 spaces that exist today. We're looking to have 63 spaces. I mean, the requirement is 63 spaces.
Jim, I don't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
The RSI's requirement is 77 spaces.
Right, but the CBD requirement is 63.
Right, but the RSI's is Trump's, the CBD.
That's not the way you've been operating here in the past 15 years. I can tell you now, it's not how we.
Yeah, what's an RSI?
Residential. The residential, the residential component would be governed by the state, the state.
Right, but I think the CBD plan overrides that.
Where your redevelopment.
If you have a special, well, if you have, my, my understanding is unless you have a special area exception from the Department of Community Affairs, regardless of whether it's in a redevelopment area or not, the RSI's governs for residential.
Did the redevelopment plan have to be approved by the Department of Community Affairs?
Yes.
When it's filed. Then that would be your special exception.
I'm just, I'm just bringing it up.
Sure.
We bring it up every, in every application, regardless whether it's in here or not.
Sure.
So you'll be providing 15 spaces, correct?
That is correct.
That's the, that's the proposal? So at this point, with a requirement of 63 spaces with the CBD plan, and with the actual is 15 spaces, so we're 48 spaces short. I'm sorry, I just feel that that's an egregious difference in what's, what's required.
It's not required.
No, I understand. 63 spaces are required, okay? What I'm saying is that for the residents of this community that are going to be living there, only providing 15 spaces is, 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 I, I, I don't know, if I had a car, if I would move in there, to be quite honest with you. To not have any place for these people to park in your own development, I, I don't get it. But I understand, it's 48 spaces short, that's, you're, you're putting in only a quarter of what is required. A quarter, that's, that's, I've never seen something that had so few spaces that are given to a development. I've never seen that. That's my statement. If anybody else has any comments?
If I can just respond to that briefly?
Sure, you can.
You have a CBD plan, redevelopment plan, that specifically states in there that either you provide the spaces or you pay into a fund, there's a reason that fund is being created. And the reason you have that option is for the city to take those monies, be able to create parking, knowing that in the downtown, there's very little room to make parking. So they created this fund, and the monies will be there in the fund then to be able to provide parking, the city can do that. That it's our right to be able to do it, your statute allows for it, and we're complying with the statutory requirement by doing that.
I'm not arguing with that, and I, and I understand. I'm just voting, I'm just voicing my opinion, that putting in one-fourth of the amount of spaces that are required, it's just, I, the one, I get it?
Listen, if I could just say, listen, parking, there's no question parking's a problem in Asbury, in the Central Business District. I'm well aware of it. I've been offering to try to come to the table for years to try and address it with the city. So the city has, and I've said this, I think I've said this to this board, I've noticed it at other boards, the city has an archaic system in the Central Business District where it's isolated residential parking from commercial parking, where it tried to allocate spaces for commercial occupants and guide that or direct that to the street, where it created, I would assign it what, something in the tune of 500 or 550 lined metered spaces in the Central Business District. The good thing is, over the last 10 years, over the last six years, the city has created revenue from those street parking meters. And I don't know, last I looked, there was a gross of somewhere between $4 and $5 million citywide. By seven years ago, it was $35,000. My bigger question is, when we identify sites in the city, in your CBD, that are set up for a growth issue that we're dealing with right now, like parking, where they designated specific properties in the CBD to deal with growth, we need to, we needed to, in the past, deal with that. Move forward, take dollars, in my, my personal opinion, take dollars that were being generated from meter revenue, and it's a very small sum, sum of maybe, I would say, $300,000 a year from the $5 million gross, debt service a bond, create a deck, and we could have solved this years and years ago. It was before the city, not before the planning board, but before the city officials, I brought New Market Tax Credit dollars to the tune of $6 or $7 million that the city, for some reason, that I can't explain, sitting here tonight, did not pursue, did not want to hear. It was free dollars because I happened to work very frequently with those program dollars, and they come around once in a blue moon. The answer is, yes, I don't want to have one for, but I've also put money into that fund over the years, not the other application that we just talked about, I'm putting money in. The city should be looking at those dollars to solve these problems. The city should be looking at the revenue they created off small business and other developers that came into this district that created revenue sources to solve those problems. So when I come and there's an application and it's like, there's no, no, I'm more than willing to sit here and work with the city and try and solve those problems, but the city has to be a willing partner. And there's certainly a lot of solutions we can pursue. There's a lot of temporary solutions we can pursue. I think a couple of them in the past have been open up some of the lots and allow permits to be issued so that some of those private lots can be used for purposes like this. I think there's a lot of short-term solutions you can use, and there's certainly easy long-term solutions we can, we can utilize. I'm always willing to be a partner, I'm always willing to look to solve those problems. I'm not going anywhere, so I, I'm as, I, I think as important as you do that they get solved.
And I was hoping that as part of this application, that you would be helping us more with the 15, 15 spaces.
We would love to be able to help you. We've approached the city, we want to have a meeting. Sit down with us, there are things that can be done with regard to parking, but we can only go half ledge. We can't do everything. There's parking funds and monies, that significant monies coming in into the parking fund. You got to utilize it then to solve the issues. There's a reason you have a parking fund, there's a reason you have all this money that's being generated. Let's utilize it, because if you solve that issue, you know what? People will be able to park, you're going to create more jobs, because then there are businesses that'll be able to expand and be able to take off. More people will live here, all right? We have an affordable housing thing that we're doing, more people will, people from all spectrums will be able to live here in the downtown. They need parking, I don't disagree, but we need a partner to work with to solve the issue. Can't do it ourselves. There's RAB funding that can be done, bonding that can be done, talk to us, meet with us. There's New Market Credits that were available, city didn't want to meet with us, that's why they're gone. There's only so much we can do. That interim parking agreement that expired and terminated a long time ago is supposed to be a partnership between my client and the city. The city didn't have the money back then, they couldn't, they didn't have fun, I get it, the city was in a tough position. They're in a lot better position today. Fine, talk to us, work with us, there are solutions to be had, but closing the door on us is going to help.
I have a question, Jack, you might be able to answer it. Is there anything written anywhere that says what the limit would be on how many spaces you can pay for into the parking fund?
Not that I'm aware of. There was never anything in the plan that quantified that. I'm not, and I have to admit, I don't work with you. The plans typically that come from the planning department within the city, and, but I'm not aware of anything. Michael, you?
I'm not.
I'm not either, and, and, you know, while I, I think that of anyone up here, I think I want as much as anyone to solve the downtown parking issue, I don't think we're going to do it on this application. But what I do want to talk about in this application are other potential uses that might have been reserved to have parking on the site, the 406 Emory site. I, I stumbled upon a memo that was written back in 2015 that seemed to allude to the fact that the Steinbeck Building and the 601 Madison, the post building, had parking obligations that were going to be satisfied both at 607 Madison and at 406 Emory. And I don't know that we were able to come up with the resolutions for those projects, and Jack, I know you were here back when, when those projects were, before the board. But I don't know if we have any insight into whether we're clear here in that if, if, if this project is built, then those obligations are no longer accounted for.
Resolution for back in, what, 2003 or 2004? When was Steinbeck's?
It was, uh, 2008.
Or two?
2002.
So 17 years ago, I'd assume that the city still has the original file, signed resolution.
So that would mean that we would, uh, by making that statement, that means that we need some time to look, to find these resolutions?
I, I don't know that we have.
If they exist?
If they exist, I mean.
If they exist?
Yeah, I, I think.
They have to exist.
I think we need to understand where the, where those projects, where the parking was coming for that, because I know that they weren't paid into the fund. So, if they were obligated to 607, fine, but if they were obligated, if even a portion of it was obligated to 406, I just don't want to lose the accounting of, of those spaces.
Don Sam and Brian Grant, back then, had a tally of what, what was, they kept, from what I understood back then from discussions I had, that they had, they had a matrix, they had a whole system of spaces, what was allocated where, and they, they kept records, I wouldn't see those records, because they're internal records for the various projects. So there should be something within the planning department. Carter, is your project, what was your arrangement for Steinbeck?
Steinbeck Building is at 607. That, that's, that's, that was the arrangement.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, listen, listen, for, and I'll just answer for a practical purpose, I don't, I don't really want to pay into a fund. The question is, do I, do I walk from my rights under the current ordinance? So, I don't want to pay into a fund, um, I don't want to have my residents not have a space. There's certainly a lot of options for me to pursue to, um, satisfy that, um, if you just, I, we bring this up all the time, there's relocations at 545 Lake temporarily over, which I have 40 vacant spaces, over at 607, I obviously put the stackers in, um, I could have put a tenant in there and probably get another 30, 40% capacity, I could put three levels of stackers, and there's a lot of things that could be done to avoid that, I own a lot on Summerfield, I bought another lot next to it, I could level that, make that parking right next to it, there's, or I could develop that, there's a lot of different options that I could pursue. I think ultimately, I think the answer though is, looking and building on 607 a deck, there's a reason why that site was selected, it sits in the center of the Central Business District. There should be no reason that we can't work together, I know we proposed a redevelopment bond to the city, utilizing taxes for what was the Savoy, and the 607 site to debt service a bond, and paid for a multi-level deck that would solve the parking issues in the Central Business District. I think that's, I mean, my personal opinion is, that's the focus, that's the direction we should go, and the, in the interim, yeah, I could do a lot of different things to accommodate my residents, so that they're not running around on the street looking for parking. I think, um, it hurts me more financially not to offer that as a, um, a service to my, 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 my tenants, so, as opposed to paying into a fund, because I don't believe the city, if I pay into the fund, the city's going to be able to provide spaces. I just don't think that's a reality. I think I've paid other money into the fund and I've never had any opportunity to seek out parking inventory for, from the city where my residents could park. So I personally think that's, for me, a waste of money, it's not what I want to do. I'd rather spend the money on more stackers, on a lot I already own, across the street, and easily service my residents, if you want to know the truth. But I don't want to lose my right in this application to say I can't do that if, if it falls under our rights, if that makes any sense.
You know, you, you hear a lot about the 607 lot. Realistically, it's the only property in the downtown where you can really do something to provide parking. We've got to have a conversation to see what can be done with that property, how it's going to be done, how much can be provided to the public, you know, it's an extended conversation. We were in here for a plan amendment with regard to the Savoy, um, great project, create a lot of jobs here in the downtown, when you start adding a parking element, that's overwhelming as what was being proposed, where it would all have to go into this parking deck, none's avail, none would be available to the public, you'd have a half-empty deck, it doesn't make economic sense, it doesn't benefit my client, certainly doesn't benefit the city, and doesn't relieve the parking situation. But we got to be able to sit down to hash through these issues, work through it, and get something done. There's property there that can be developed, where you can solve a lot of these issues, can't do it ourselves, need a partner.
All right, so there, there are two things that I'm going to be asking now, is like, for the 23 spaces that exist today, when you're in construction, where are these people going to park?
23 spaces?
The 23 spaces in Lot 10 exists today, that's from the, these documents, where will they park during construction?
Well, I have the Summerfield lot, um, and I, I bought it at the site next to it, I have a couple opportunities for, for that, I also own the lot across, um, we can also put more stackers in, um, I could rent a lot, certainly, I, I looked at opportunities, I think, um, well, not before this board, but when I met with the city, I've talked to Istar about renting their lot a block away, so there's, there's a lot of different things I can do that we've looked into, to relocate people, I think, um, the longest, uh, the furthest lot was about a block and a half. I also can attend, you know, we have 700 bangs, I could put an attendant in there, so there's, there's lots of little things that I can do, that's a complete.
All right, so I, I would propose that we know what you're going to do with these 23 people, these 23 spaces for this application, that's my proposal. So where, wherever you're going to put them, let us know where you're going to put them. I'm just throwing that out there, and the other thing is that, do you have a proposal for the other 48 spaces, when you're saying you have all these other lots, would you consider any of those 48 spaces going to those other lots that you have? The, the shortage?
I prefer, I, I prefer to reserve my rights and work for permanent solution. That's what my, my preference would be, I think it would be in the best interest of the city, the community, and everyone involved. So, I think that's, I think the city has to recognize there's a real issue here that finally needs to be resolved.
The reference to 23 parking spaces, I don't believe anybody's parking.
For Lot 10?
What's on?
Lot 10 is, is, is what people are parking in right now?
I think the testimony last time was that there was no one permanently parking there.
Nobody's parking under, in that building.
Currently, correct, yeah.
Nobody is allowed to park in the available parking spaces that are in that building today, nobody can park there.
Well, you're talking about, so, the only, in the existing structure, I only have commercial, I have commercial, um, tenants there, and I have retail on the first floor, which I'm not required to provide any parking for.
All right.
And I don't lease any parking to them.
So Lot 10, does anybody that lives today in the building that we're talking about park from, in Lot 10, that lives there?
Nobody lives, nobody lives on Lot 9?
Lot 9, nobody lives, nobody lives there, it's only retail?
There's, it's all, it's second floor office, first floor retail.
Okay, so nobody lives there, so we're not, during construction, nobody is going to be?
Nobody's displaced.
Displaced.
Correct.
So who parks there today? Does retail park there today?
Uh, probably in our company vehicles, we might park a couple there from time to time.
Okay, so, so we're saying that we don't, nobody will be displaced during construction?
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
I, I just, I don't know that, that we have an answer on the, on the 406 Emory obligations, I mean, unless they're willing to testify that there's definitely not an agreement that has allocated spaces to that, to that lot, I think we need to look into that, I don't, I just, I really just don't want to lose the accounting of.
Understood.
If there were obligations for that parking, that we just keep track of it.
Well, I can tell you, if I could just say, 601 is also at, um.
607.
607, and we signed those, those are post condo, we put those there, and it's the Steinbeck, it's those two buildings.
Okay.
All right, so we'll, we need some time to be able to check that out, correct? That's what we're saying? Okay.
And that was the reason, by the way, for the stackers, because I, the truth is, is on the residential side, we had such a high vacancy, because the code required one and a half, but the reality is, one is really probably what, what is really the demand is.
And I, I don't disagree, I just want to make sure that we keep track of the accounting.
Okay.
Right.
I would offer that as, maybe, if we do move forward with approval, if we do move forward with approval, we make a condition that, that we look into the resolutions for those projects.
Right.
And as long as there were no parking obligations for the 406 Emory site, then that's fine.
Now, when you're, now, are we talking that, that's Lot 10?
Lot 10.
Lot 10?
Well, Lot 10 and.
And, and 3.
The Summerfield lot, yeah.
Lot 10 and 3, okay.
Well, I think Lot 3 is not part of the application.
Right, but Lot 3 becomes rendered useless if the building's built.
No, not really, because the lot's accessible on Summerfield.
No, I don't think it is.
Yeah, no, I have a road cut.
You wouldn't be able to pull out, is the problem. It's, it would be a one-way aisle, with, that would be dead-ended. So if you pull into a parking space, you actually, unless you reverse the entire aisle back, you wouldn't.
You'd have to reconfigure it to have any sort of realistic.
It would be parallel parking, you'd probably get like three spaces.
Right, today there are eight. Okay, so we can put, if we move forward, we can put that as a condition? Go ahead.
You said there was a room to park at 607, there was a Steinbeck?
Well, I think there was, it was in a resolution, I just, I'll look for the resolution. I would imagine it's in there, because.
I would hope.
If it's not, there was a reason it wouldn't have. I mean, I put in, I always put in where, what, what parking is going to take place where, unless there's, for some reason, I can't tell you what happened 17 years ago.
Right, right.
You know, unless, unless there was something that was done in the redevelopment agreement that way, it might have been approached in that fashion back then, I don't really know. Okay, there will be something that would have been, should be, there should be a record of it internally within the building somewhere.
Yeah, I'm sure it's in the resolution.
Does the, the board have any other questions?
I'll probably have a copy.
Beyond that?
You should, no, I know, but the file should still be.
I'm here longer than you.
All right, we, we just need.
Yeah.
All right, does the board have any other questions?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Um, is there a possibility to set a specific amount of spaces that can be paid into, so we would not have this problem? I mean, probably would do it in Asbury Park, but say someone came along and they wanted to build a building that had 100 apartments, or 50, and there were only 10 spaces, so then, if you don't have a limit, what would I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, putting the money there is fine, but that does not solve the problem of someone who has a car or two that wants to park, so.
I could, I could, I could solve your problem, you guys, if the city works with me, the problem's solved. That's the way I look at it.
To answer your question, Trudy, I think that, as a, as a city, as a board, as a, you know, city entity, we could, we could amend the redevelopment plan to put that limit, if so desired. We could revell, we could amend the redevelopment plan to say that all parking must be provided on site. I don't think anyone wants that, I think we don't, you know, we obviously recognize that the CBD is a dense environment, and the benefit of having a walkable district is that there's centralized structured parking, and that was the whole reason that the CBD redevelopment plan was put in place. Um, so to answer your question, it could, it could be amended, the plan could be amended to set a limit, however, there are other implications.
Right, it could happen.
Okay, and if that was the case, this, we would be discussing 48 spaces?
Correct.
Mike, what's this question?
Or we could pull a deck.
That there, there was, the issue is that we removed that from the CBD plan, saying that it's at the jurisdiction of the planning board, because there's, there's, we would've had to have created all of the criteria, being able to make that decision?
So we're not going to go further and provide the criteria?
That, that doesn't mean that we're not going to give the criteria, it means that we would have to amend it. And if we wanted to proceed with that, we would proceed with that, but based on what happened, we decided to move that out, for now.
That might be a question?
Yeah, yeah. So anything else from the board that they'd like to comment on regarding this application? Anything else? Anything from our profession, oh, go ahead.
Just a question, Barbara.
Sure.
Has it been determined, or Barbara going to research to find out whether or not Lot 10 and Lot, and whatever the lot number on 607, uh, is encumbered in any way by the prior applications, before we take any, any further action on this?
That could be put into, and, and, Jack, we could put that in as a condition, is that true?
Yes.
We could put that in as a condition of the approval, if that's okay with you, you know?
What I'm concerned with, if that, if we find that either or both, well, if Lot 10 is encumbered in any way.
Mm-hmm.
Then we're going to have to come back here and revisit the decision.
We would have to come back to find parking for those.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, revisit this particular.
Yes, it would have to be revisited, absolutely. Anything from our professionals? Nope? Any questions from the public on this topic? Go ahead.
It's just different from comments, right?
That's correct, it's a question.
Why is this sworn?
Yes. Go ahead.
Do you swear in front of a testimony against your name? Will we get a vote for you then?
I do.
State your name for the record?
Sorry, again about the voice, so, Ernest Meanole, 400 Deal Lake Drive, uh, just the fact that I mentioned 400 Deal Lake Drive, there is no parking, so anyway, uh, I'm always around this area, and I've noticed a trend that I thought was very dynamic, uh, some other developers are building buildings almost like this, and somehow they're digging out the basement and going down a few levels, and everybody's parking there. Another one around the corner has like a glass, it's like a cookie jar parking for the owners, I mean, that's beautiful. Uh, you know, it seems to me, uh, that back lot, the, the backlog situation, when we, when the first meeting came here, uh, I left the meeting to go look at that lot that's taken out of the total, I mean, you can't turn a bicycle around in there. And second of all, there were a lot of cars parked there in the day and at night, and I thought I heard testimony that no one ever uses that lot. And then I'm thinking, wait a minute, 45 residents, one and a half car per, now you got retail stores with owners and workers and customers, and I know the last tenant in that building happens to be my lawyer, and they're lucky they can park in Asbury, their employees have to park like, who knows where. So what I'm thinking, when all the bars and clubs have their patrons here, and when everything's really flying with events and parades, what are these poor residents going to do?
Probably.
Really, it's just, I don't know, is that a question? No.
It's a comment, that's a comment.
So, is there a chance, hey, don't, don't cut me off, I'm city attorney, let me just ask my question, is there a way that, that those back parking could be made into some steel structure with like three levels? Or, in this side entrance, dig down and make two ground levels, and then you make up your spots, because on this ratio, it's going to drive that, isn't it going to drive that area into a parking frenzy? How's that, that's a question?
No, it's actually a statement, but you add it's rhetorical, last phrase, in the court of law, you're characterizing the testimony and then saying it's a question, but it's really a statement.
I don't know what you just said.
It's okay, I know what I just said.
Nobody else knows what you said, that's for sure.
Got to get a motion to, uh, open up for public comment.
Move it.
Well, we didn't, we didn't open for public comment. Even though we did get a comment, we didn't open.
Motion to open for public comment.
Thank you. Now.
A second.
All right. Go ahead.
Very embarrassing. There's no reason to be embarrassed. No, I feel like, there's 15,000 people that live here, and I'm the only.
All right, sworn in.
Sworn in.
I did, I just did.
No, no, then you made a comment earlier, you thought it was a question.
That wasn't.
I'm so confused. Open and close public questions and comments so many times, I'm lost at where we are.
All right, so then let's swear me again, just to make sure, because that might have been on the broader application.
No, it was just, just now.
Well, then you made, then you just made comment under O.
He was under O, so that was a comment.
I changed it.
Whatever shall be gone, we swore it in.
Okay, go ahead, for your comment. Comment, you're, you're sworn in, you're good.
You're already in.
You're good.
You can put you in.
Okay.
So, knowing this area, my comment is, and knowing that dynamic nature of the So, knowing this area, my comment is, and knowing the dynamic nature of the developers, I know that they could come back with a way to get probably all the cars, and maybe more. They may have to give up a few units, but, hey. And then, my comment is, this thing about the parking and paying into the fund, I mean, you only have to live here to be, I don't, I don't know, Mr. Manzella, how many? I can't ask the question. There...
Ask it anyway.
When, when this city is filled with 15,000 residents, and then you bring in the patrons, there is no way, I mean, you've got people parking, you know, just leaving their car in the middle of the street. I mean, there's nothing, parking on sidewalks, and, so, I, I'm confident with the skill of this developer that they could come up with probably another, how many you need, how many?
48.
And how many are there?
15.
And you throw in that lot that they don't want to get?
All right, we, we need comments.
Okay.
Keep going.
Can you throw in that lot? What do you get with that, another 8?
Yes.
Oh, that's a question. I'd like to see them throw in that lot, and then maybe stack or build a, you know, kind of parking where you could have 3 levels of parking. Or, and/or, I'd like to see them take that side entrance and, and dig down and build a lot of parking. That's my comment.
Thank you. Ernest, is this your phone? Ernest? Jennifer Lampert, 512 Second Avenue.
Need to swear in?
Oh, yeah. Yes, I do. My comment is that, in, in any urban environment, in any successful urban environment, you can't rely on every single building to provide parking. It doesn't exist, and it does, the, the spaces that are there don't really allow for it. And you, so you can't say, okay, well, he's got 1 quarter of the parking. There's, there's no way to really make it an effective building and do that, it seems like. I think that, for me, as a business owner and as a resident, I'd like to see the city doing more. You do, you've got meters. You've got meters that are cranking, making money all through the winters now, and you've got these, you know, developers paying into a parking fund. I'd love to see what, how much money's in there, and what the city's plan is, because, you know, while you could ask Carter to provide parking for his residents, I have employees that need parking, and you can't expect, where would I have built that? If it was a requirement of commercial, so it can't be. So I just think the city really has to get on it, this is the time, and make some decisions, and actually make some progress in the downtown area. So, that's my comment. I don't think that it can all be solved on each and every property. There's properties, there's no way that you're going to be able to incorporate parking, and you're going to want to see them develop, like that telephone building I love so much. What's somebody going to do with parking there? You know, you've got to, you've got to be reasonable about it, and you have to be participating. The city must be participating in this parking problem, not just for residents, but for people that work here, that bring business to the town. My employees have a heck of a time parking. So, please, like, let's make some progress on parking, that's my comment. Motion to close public comment?
Sure.
Second.
Can I get a motion for this application?
Can we hear the conditions of...
Yeah, I, from the last meeting to this meeting, I have like 17 conditions. I'll, I'll get through them. There were usual CBD conditions in all locations, reportedly. Then, subject to compliance with the outstanding issues Jason's reported and we went over. Trash recycling is to be taken out by building personnel. I have number 4, that the parking space contribution will be 48 spaces into the fund. New, as part and parcel of that, and again, a new condition that said, basically, subject to a finding by the city that the parking spaces currently located on lot 10 have not been previously assigned to other approved projects within the CBD zone, such as, but not limited to Steinbaks or Post Building.
Jack, just to add to that also, what, for lot 3? Those spaces, if they were not already allotted to somebody? Just to, it's all, it's all the same process, but instead of the 48, then there would be, there would be some others that would have to be...
So maybe lot 10 or lot 3?
Yeah, 10 and 3. If they were not allotted to other projects already.
So I add that in as part of it.
Yep.
Approval of any right-of-way approach was by the city council. Rooftop HVAC setback to be, not to be visible, possibly be screened. Security lighting system for ingress and egress, and mirrors, I guess, at the entrance on Emery. Lots 9 and 10 to be consolidated by D to be submitted to and reviewed by myself or engineer. Bike racks, 1 on Emery, 2 on Benz? Correct. Lighting was to be gooseneck lighting on Bong and Shielded. Sewer connection fees is determined by, I mean, the city engineer. Screening of the HVAC on the roof, which ties it over there. Change the wall scans light fixtures to up and down, I think that was a discussion that Michael was engaged in. Jason's soil bores to confirm groundwater depth. Submission of rooftop lighting plan to both Jason and Planner for review and approval. And as of tonight, another one would be that the architect, let's see if I characterize this correctly, architect will use a quote soft color. Warm color similar...
Picking up one of the elements.
It's more, it's, it's a coordination of the color temperature of the, of the trim around the existing building with that.
Let me read this out and see if this works. Architect to use a warm color similar to the light banding color that exists on the pre-existing building within the facade of the new structure? Characterize it correctly?
The cladding of the new structure.
Cladding of the new structure.
To be included with the, the color elements, right?
And then I had that 17th one, which was the lots 10 and lot 3, parking lot verification.
There's the, the other thing that we, I know that you mentioned mirrors on the, when we were talking about the garage, when people are coming out. There was also supposed to be some sort of warning, whether it be lights or something that, that you've done on other...
Light journey light system for ingress and egressing mirrors.
Yes.
Including lighting and sound.
Including some light, lighting or sound, or what, what we normally put out there to warn people.
Does it include the sound element as well?
Yes.
Yeah, you do that normally on all your buildings.
Jack, can I ask them just to pass around that exhibit, so we know what we're approving? Can we look at, can we look at the exhibit?
Of course.
Do you mind passing that, just around the board?
One, one thing that I'm not sure that we captured or that agreed to is that it was to investigate using a smaller module in...
Yeah.
Other larger panels were being...
So the 18-inch?
And you want the small, you want the smaller panels or larger?
Hold on a second, Jack, there.
Yeah, condition.
Anything else?
So what was that condition, the resolution on that condition? Are we requesting smaller panels, or?
My recommendation was that the module, whatever that cladding material is, be reduced to a smaller unit, so that it becomes less blocky and less, less obvious, less pronounced.
And is the intention for the color of the material on the back to not, are you trying not to match the color on the front? Meaning the back building, where it changes?
No, that is just meant to be more uniform.
So it...
One of the fronts got different shades, but the same color.
So you didn't pick one?
Just to distinguish from the back.
But is it the same material?
Yes, it is.
And the same size, that 18-inch?
Yes, it is.
What's in between the panels?
What's in between the...
Are they like, are they flush, are they...
It's a joint, it's about 5/8 of an inch. I, I know that it's shown as a line in here.
Yeah.
It's barely distinguishable, once the panels are on.
Anything else? So are we asking for the, for those to be the smaller panels?
I don't know if they've indicated, can you do smaller panels?
I'm not sure that if you can, smaller will investigate, just find out from the conflict, they can make it smaller. But once the panels are installed, the only difference you guys see is the shading. And we'll, again, we'll try to make that shading as, as close as possible, not as, you know, have a big difference as what we have here. Once it's, it's done, it's a flat beside, you don't, you don't see joints, because we're all the same color.
Because I think in particular, the misalignment of like, what are the structural columns with the, that are underneath the window?
Yeah, they don't be aligned, yes.
It's super visible in your rendering.
I, I guess, no, I did, I do get that, yes.
Yeah.
Can I make a suggestion, as a condition of the application? And Mr. Serpico, if you can tell me if we can do this. Just to finalize, to make sure we're all on the same page, we'll come up with the size of panels, the coloring, everything, come back before the design review for a final write-off on that.
I think the board has to agree, I think.
The board, the board should...
The board has to...
Ultimately, the board has to approve anything the designer review committee does. Yeah, I mean, you, I can either couch this into a condition that you're requiring the panel to be smaller, or exploration of whether or not the panel can be made smaller.
I think it's exploration, and then some explanation to the design review committee.
Okay.
Well, one way, one way you do that, and not to make this any crazier than it, than it needs to be, but, you know, you grant preliminary, you say plan approval tonight, and subject to the final just being for the building, and you go to DRC, and then you go, come in for final, everything, you know, I don't know. It's just making it two steps, which is not abnormal in most boards.
If we set a new date tonight for final, then I don't have to re-advertise.
You don't have to advertise for final.
We don't require...
You don't have to, there's no advertising for final. Just for preliminary. And any variances would be great.
This final is usually just a...
Well, you usually get to check.
You do it all conditions, and if not, you know.
But we would limit it to just...
Just the argument.
The arc, the material, the size of materials and the color. Correct?
So you want to grant final for everything else, but preliminary for this one condition?
Yes.
Or we could do, you could do preliminary for...
For everything.
Yes, you can.
I think we're better off just limiting when we come in here for final. I think the only issue really is the size of the panels and the color scheme, so why don't we just do final for everything and come back? I want to make sure we get the building right, and that you're happy and satisfied with the building.
So let's, why don't we do final for everything else, and then just for this piece, you come back on the, on April 22nd?
And we'll come back for the, the design review committee beforehand, just to go over it.
That would be on April 8th. Okay?
The final on everything else and preliminary.
Yep.
So for the final, when you come back with the final, will you be showing any of the conditions, like the bike racks?
No.
No, no, just, just this.
It's only this.
So we're not going to look at that at all?
No.
Okay, so then we're going to require 2 motions, all right? One for final, for all but, would be condition 18, but now will be condition number 1 as part of preliminary. I find it very difficult that you can grant final approval for a portion of the application.
I mean, could, could...
I don't know that it does.
Could we grant final approval with... Right. Could we grant final approval with that condition being conditional that they must appear before the planning board for that facade?
The cleaner way...
Hats to cleaner ways.
Cleaner way is to, as we did, just to make it a condition of the approval, and that they have to come back.
Resolution compliance.
Yeah, as part of resolution compliance. And if they come in and tell us, we've explored it, we can't do it, we could have explored it, we can't do it. There's your answer.
Do it that way, it's resolution compliance.
Okay.
Well, it's condition number 18 as to the size of panels.
Okay. That's all it is, okay?
Color, size, color.
Size and color.
Yes.
Okay, got it, size and color.
Yeah, color was, wasn't, the color was a prior condition.
Right.
The size is the last condition.
So, size and color, April 22nd, DRC on April 8th. And we're, we do a final of everything except that size and color.
No, we're giving them preliminary, final.
Yes.
As a condition, one of the conditions of preliminary and final is number 18, which would be investigating the use of smaller panels and the cladding on the new structure. So that's part of resolution compliance, and as part of that, you're going to, they're going to go out there voluntarily, and you're asking them to come, to go before your technical review committee, and then come back to full board and tell us.
Okay.
Isn't that essentially what you're asking them?
On the color and the size.
Color and size.
Yeah.
Okay. April 22nd, just on that one topic.
Without further notice.
Without further notice.
Yeah. And the rest of it is all checklist, right?
Yep.
And resolution compliance, that's it.
Can I get a motion?
So moved. With conditions, with conditions 1 through 18.
With conditions 1 through 18.
Oh, and there's a C variance in this as well. Preliminary and final, the C variance for the height, the 4.4 feet, 4 feet 4 inches.
Yes.
Can we so amend that?
So amend, can we amend the motion?
Yes, yes, amended with a C variance.
Second.
Councilwoman Yona Clayton?
Yes.
Jennifer Emery?
Yes.
Mike Mandela?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Trudy Seifax?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Yes.
And you've now set that already on the record?
Yes.
Yes, so on the DRC April 8th, 6:00 PM.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the only thing that might change is the time of the DRC, because if we have 2, then it'll be 6, if we only have 1, it'll be 6:30. if we only have one, it'll be six thirty, if we have two, it'll be six. So, Barbara...
I'll be here anyway.
I'm sure you will be. Okay, next application, CNC Cookman Development, seven twenty-two and seven twenty-four Cookman Avenue.
Okay, Madam Chairwoman, this...
Twenty-second.
...situation from the last meeting.
That's the second meeting in...
Yeah.
Okay.
If I may, Andrew Charis of the firm Fox Ridgell, on behalf of the applicant CNC Cookman Development LLC, for my final application this evening.
I'd just like to just take one moment to thank the applicants for giving us their, their time and allowing us to move them from last week, and also being patient today. So, let's get it going. Thank you.
What we're here for tonight, the property is seven twenty-two, seven twenty-four Cookman Ave., block two four oh five, lot one. Applications for preliminary and final site plan, also a C variance for a height, a height that's permitted within the Cookman Ave. Retail Core, which is part of CBD redevelopment zone, is forty-five feet. We're proposing to add height to go up to forty-nine feet and two inches. As I indicated, we are again within the CBD redevelopment zone, Cookman Ave. Retail Core District. Existing on the site is a two-story building, the lot size is nine thousand square feet. The existing height for the property is thirty-two feet, ten inches. Existing floor area is five thousand seven hundred and twelve square feet. What's being proposed is a renovation and an upgrade of the building, make it to a four-story building consistent with the rest of the Cookman Ave. Retail Core, and a lot of what exists within the downtown. Ground floor retail, floors two through four would house nine residential apartments, where a total floor area is fifteen thousand four hundred and twelve square feet. I'll be calling tonight to testify, a few witnesses. Anthony DeAngelo, the architect, will testify as to the plans. I'll be calling Robert Feinstein to testify to certain design elements, like the architects. Then I'd be calling Robert Curly as our engineer to go over the engineering aspects of the building. At that stage, we can move right into the application, Mr. DeAngelo.
Thank you.
Take your name to the record?
Anthony DeAngelo, D-A-N-G-L-O, Studio One Architects.
Thank you.
Mr. DeAngelo, can you give the board the benefit of your qualifications, please?
Licensed architect in New Jersey, B. R. Pennsylvania.
Have you testified before boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And you've testified before planning boards?
Yes.
Have you testified to your house very far?
Zoning.
Zoning? As an expert in architecture.
Except.
You call on your licensed New Jersey?
Ninety-four years.
Long time. Sir, you're familiar with this application, am I correct?
Yes.
And prepare plans relative to the application, also some photographs that you put on the boards and my nerves, am I correct?
Yes.
Let's go through the property generally, what is there? You know, let's go into the design elements of what you've done with the building.
So as was mentioned before, we are in the CBD district in the Cookman Ave. Retail Core. The property is forty feet by one hundred, or four thousand square feet. As you can see in one of the existing photographs, it, we have frontage on three sides.
Before you got, I wanted to identify that as A one, for identification of where that was.
So we have frontage on three sides, Cookman to the north, and the alleyway on the west, and an alleyway on the south. And these are such, these are pictures of those existing conditions and views from those locations. Currently on the property, we have a two-story building, retail on ground level, upper level is vacant, but I believe may have been commercial. There is on the alleyway to the, to the west, there's an existing step and landing, and a, and a door that goes into an existing stairwell at the rear of the building, rear floor of the building. There used to be, to the, to the east of the existing two-story structure, there used to be a one, one and a half story structure that was subsequently removed. So there is a vacant portion of that piece of the lot. To the east of our property, we have a two-story structure as well.
You've prepared a number of words that are basically the plans with the budgeted property, correct?
That's correct.
One way to identify each word individually, that's one way to identify, that's two for identification.
Okay, so A two shows the zoning map, the zoning chart, residential unit evaluation. As was mentioned earlier, we are seeking a variance for height, we are, our proposed height is forty-nine feet, two inches, which is four feet, two inches above forty-five feet, which is less than ten percent. The ultimate proposal that we have here is to have a total of mixed use with retail on the ground level, and three stories of residential for a total of nine units. And that's composed on three, on each of the three floors. We have one, one bedroom, one and a half bath unit, eight hundred and eight square feet. Then we have two, two bedrooms, two bath units on each floor. And those range from, on the second floor, the two bedroom units are one thousand one hundred and eighty-seven square feet, and on the third and fourth floor, they're one thousand two hundred and twenty-five square feet. We are, the existing building, as I showed in the photograph here, is zero setback on coffee line in Cookman, and zero setback on the coffee line along the western alleyway. And we're setback approximately six inches from the rear property line. So...
Sport the next board, and these are, these boards are A two, and what we're talking about are the plans that are submitted, am I correct?
That's correct.
A three will be CG two. And then A three will be CG two. Please describe that.
Okay, so what we have here is, to the western side of the property, as I mentioned before, we have the existing two-story structure, and we are proposing to add two stories above that. And then in the slipper of the vacant portion of the property, the eastern side of our property, we are proposing adding a four-story addition. And ultimately, like I mentioned before, we will have, as this plan shows, which is the proposed site slash ground floor plan, we will have the retail space approximately two thousand square feet, which has an existing stairwell, as I mentioned before, at the rear of the space in the rear of the building, which had, goes down to an existing basement. That's under the existing two-story structure. So, what our proposal is, is to open up the, the western facade of the commercial space with more storefront on the alleyway side, and to redirect the entrance more, for the retail space more towards the corner of the building on that side, which is directly across from our property, across the alleyway. So we basically want to open up the retail space out towards the park, and also when you come in off the main street onto Cookman, it's about approximately a hundred feet from that intersection. So we want to really highlight the commercial towards that side of the, of the site. In the new addition, we will be creating the residential lobby, and we'll have two exit stairs and elevator, trash, recycling area for the residential units, a maintenance room, and rear exit to the rear alleyway. We're providing a storage in the residential lobby, storage room for large boxes deliveries. A lot of people get deliveries from Amazon these days and other sorts of entities. And so that's something that we find that is a need for people to have a place where they can be stored. As I mentioned before, there's an existing basement underneath the retail area, and so we don't need all of that area for the retail storage, so we're going to subdivide a portion of that for residential storage cages for the unit, residential units above, some, a sprinkler room, and trash recycling area for the retail space as well.
I note on western mark, there's A three for identification, there's a picture of a bike rack.
Yes, that'll be on, on Cookman, in the area of the sidewalk, and I believe that the engineers drawings will go into a little bit more detailed location of some of those elements regarding Cookman, the sidewalk area, I guess. So we have a small planter box that would be sitting on the sidewalk, that's adjacent to the recessed residential lobby entrance, as well as the, the bike rack.
Now to the next.
And then also in the rear, on, on the ground level, in the rear, along the alleyway, that's where we show where the electric meters and the gas meters would be located, with bollards protecting them.
Next board, we're going to mark as A four for identification.
So as I mentioned, we have three floors of residential, and the floor plans are broken up very similarly in the, in the front portion for Cookman side and the rear alley side. Those are where the two bedroom units are located. This way we get frontage on two sides with open living kitchen on the corners, with lots of windows, get lots of light into the units. And in the middle of the plan is the one bedroom, one and a half bath unit. As I mentioned before, we have two exit stairs and an elevator with a common corridor, and that's part of that addition on the eastern side of our property. Again, the third and fourth floor plans are same layout with slightly, you know, more, larger units for the two bedrooms, because downstairs we have the masonry, existing masonry walls, which take up more floor area, so they're a little bit smaller.
Going out to, to the one, A five.
So what we have here on this drawing is the closed roof plan, and we have the flat roof with tapered insulation for drill, as required for drainage. We have a parapet on all four sides, a three foot six height parapet. Roof access is going to be from the rear stairwell through a roof hatch. We are locating the condensing units for the HVAC for the nine residential units in the middle of the plan and towards the back of the building, so exposed to the access to the roof, from the roof hatch. And not shown on here, but what we'd be here would be at least one, maybe two other condensing units for the commercial space. The height of these units would be at or below the height of the parapet wall. So the parapet wall now provides protection on the roof from, you know, from guard, a guard, creates a guardrail so that firefighters and such, people working on, on the equipment won't fall off, but it'll also help screen those, those HVAC units.
Based upon the screen that that parapet provides, for those units, HVAC units to be visible from the street.
We also have the, shown on the plan, the elevator bulkhead, which pops up slightly above the height of the, of the parapet. So I'm going to talk generally about the elevations and the height, and I'm going to let Mr. Feinstein go into a little bit more detail with the renderings of our proposed project, talking about the design intent, the materials, and the, and the, and the facade elements, things of that nature. As I mentioned before, we are seeking a height variance, forty-nine feet, two inches, and basically the existing ground level of the two-story building has got fourteen foot ceiling, very high ceilings. On the second floor, also pretty high ceiling at twelve foot, so that sort of sets up our floor lines for the other two stories above that. And we are showing nine foot ceilings on those upper two levels. Nine foot, we like to get more light and air into the units, number one, but also it allows us to have some, some ceiling height for drops off, it's for HVAC, depending on that and such. So we don't like to really go below the, the drops. And that's sort of what sets up the, the overall height of the building. And as I mentioned before, then you have the parapet three foot six inches above the roof line as well. So, the idea, as you can see from the, the elevations here on Cookman, and also the right side alleyway, which is facing west, is to, to work with the existing window openings, which are very large window openings on the second floor, and also maintain those, the window layout and the design, and also to work within those bays and create more openings, as I mentioned before, on the ground level into the retail space. Units above also work with that bay system, and we'd rather get very tall and larger windows to kind of balance out with the windows that will happen to residential units on the, on the second floor. So the third floor, while they're a different design, they also have the similar proportions to let in light and air into those units as well. As I mentioned before, we have the existing step and landing, so at the rear of the ground level, and we would be installing a canopy just to provide some shelter from the rain and the elements. We show some design details that Mr. Feinstein will talk to you more about, which is the planter boxes that extend off the building, and he'll show you more of that in the renderings.
Next.
Do you stand for identification? So what we have here is the rear elevation on the alleyway, which faces south, and here you can see that three foot canopy over that stair that I just mentioned. You can see the existing two-story, the existing two-story structure, which currently is a, is a masonry and stucco facade. We're opening up those windows on the rear of the second floor to bring in more light, because currently there wasn't many openings, so they were all openings that were closed up. We have the recessed covered rear entry into the, into the residential hallway, as I mentioned before, which exits out onto the rear alleyway. And then on the left side elevation or east, you can see the profile of, of the existing adjacent property to the east, which is two stories on Cookman, and then it steps down to a one-story on the back side, facing the rear alleyway. And so we have design, which Mr. Feinstein will go through, easy panels with different score joints and different patterns to break down that facade on that side of the building, as well as on the first two stories of the rear alleyway.
Robert Feinstein to testify, also with Studio One.
Please swear our firm has money to give during these proceedings. If you choose, if you choose, then that will be true.
I do.
State your name to the record.
Robert Feinstein.
Thank you.
Mr. Feinstein, can you please give the board the benefit of your qualifications and who you work for?
Yes, I work for Studio One Architects and have... Yes, I work for Studio One Architects and have for seventeen-plus years, I'm the design director of that firm. I do all client relations, build department, and drawings.
Okay, and you worked on the drawings and the design elements of this particular building, correct?
Yes.
And then?
So I was super excited when we first connected with the minds, a resident of Asbury Park. I'm very familiar with this structure, always admired it. I think it has that perfect nineteen thirties downtown, somewhat Art Deco-like history. Not a lot of detail, but some detail. There's a patch of herringbone brick in here. I think it has a really unique, you know, color tone to it. So again, I was really, I was like, you know, for the project. With that, I did a little research and started, you know, delving into what Art Deco means. And I think Asbury doesn't have a lot of really good examples of it, but I tried to take the best parts and emulate it the sort of best we could. So again, as Anthony said, they had this great scale with these large windows. The storefront that was currently there was covered up. There were two additional bays that have been bricked or stuck over. So when we did a little bit of investigation, we found that actually did step back down the alleyway about another twenty feet. The portion that was dismantled, unfortunately, one and a half stories, and it was in very poor condition. So I wanted to pay sort of, you know, attention to that element and not try and connect the two pieces. So the first thing was, how do we make this lower scale work at a pedestrian level? I really wanted to, you know, maintain our neighbor, our neighboring height line. So we kind of kept that feel to the, you know, the lower portion of the project. And then I think seeing many applicants, we're taking that, say, we all want to add the new, there's not too many things we can do. So we wanted to bring the brick, the, the color tone, really again focused in on the herringbone, so I created these panels that wrap the upper facade, tie two, you know, together, using the scale of some of the existing windows and some of the new windows.
Okay, let's identify that again, so you've been making reference of, what do you call it, four point four one, which we've identified as A eight. And we're going to move on to four two, which we'll identify as B.
So if you looking towards the east from Main Street, you can see the park in full bloom. We thought that that was really exciting, wanted to keep that big window pattern. And I wanted to, again, tie the building together. I draw these breaks between the windows up to kind of continue the column line.
Very logical.
So excited to say that.
I'm excited, so I don't have to say it.
So, you know, that's how we're sort of keep referencing the old with, you know, with the new, our brick. And I do have a sample of it, sort of a, kind of a baby blue, powder blue. It's a hand blazed brick out of California. It's a very beautiful brick. I think it's, um...
Do you have that with you?
Show us the sample. We love samples. After it's admitted.
If I can push the board.
So this is a pretty good product out of California, this face brick. We use a face brick. We try to use as many green principles in building construction that we can without going into like LEED certification. So the upper two floors will be, will be built out of a light gauge metal structural framing system. And it's easier and cheaper for construction to use a face brick as opposed to a real brick. We incorporate some new metal panels. I have samples of those as well, in two tones. We really like to try to create movement in my building. So when you have something so stowey and heavy, I think it's nice that the upper portions feel kind of light and that they sort of slide, you know, past each other. And then I add these two, you know, bays or, yeah, and I kind of play on what I saw on Cookman for a baked window without actually imitating a baked window. So there are these two, they're powder coated metal. They would attach to the building's facade, to the structure. And then those two pieces would have planter boxes in them. A eleven, next word to the board. This board shows obviously two images of the facade in its current form.
That's existing on the bottom of the board.
Existing on the bottom and the new, you know, bird's eye overview of what's proposed. I do think that we have a lot about. This is an existing column structure that remains. We wanted to break up the sort of standard inset middle door and really start to address Main Street again as the residential in this town. We all looking forward to when Main Street really does engage with the rest of the downtown. And this is sort of our, you know, welcome magnets.
So it creates a transition then where a lot of the buildings, obviously on Cookman, are facing into Cookman. What you're doing is transitioning then also from Main Street to bring that in onto Cookman, onto the building. Did I get that right?
That's, that's pretty much it.
You're an architect.
Been doing it for a while.
One of the things I think come up in one of the planner reports are, you know, residential entry. Again, knowing as I do go this particular area pretty well, I realize that most of the residential doors are recessed and are not addressed. And so when we sort of did an ad, a window, or really create an entry for residential by some significant oning or some other piece, we wanted to keep it in line with what developers working on particularly this block of Cookman. So we did create an element that addressed it. The residents know where they live, there was a name on the building, wrote out the number. So we're trying to kind of reduce the residential portion of the building and emphasize typically glass, that's the thing with the building.
All right, you're familiar with certain reports that were rendered in this matter, am I correct?
Yes.
There is a planner's report that was prepared by Mr. Sullivan, also an engineering report that was also prepared by Jason, correct? What I want to do is first go through the planning report and the architectural comments in that report, and then I'll go into the engineering report. For more to the course of...
Sure.
To man, Aaron, let's get Jason in mic as well. Natural self-approach.
Do you swear in front of testimony during these proceedings with the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Creating the engineer affiliation of the state.
Michael Sullivan, Clark Kaden, hence planning board planner.
Jason Fitcher, board engineer.
Thank you.
What we're going to do is A twelve is going to be the planner's report, A thirteen then will be the engineering report. If I had a chance to review the reports that are rendered by the board professionals, am I correct?
Yes.
And what I'm going to do is I'm going to direct your attention to certain portions of the report, starting again with planner's report, A twelve for identification. If we go to page three of twelve, the first comment has to do with building height, maximum building height, which is A, so it represents the proposed height. See, it's four feet, two inches of that permitted. So according to height, well, two, maximum permitted by four feet, two inches, unless you measure to the top of the roof. It represents less than a 10% difference in the permitted height, requiring a C two variance. Agree with that?
Right, yes.
The reason that the building is exceeding the permitted height forty-five, why is that?
That's typical of these older buildings in downtowns. They created a higher first floor plate, you know, commercial businesses. So we do have a higher plate, I think this is a working ring. And then the other portions are all higher than normal, than two normal room build today. And then we wanted to keep the spirit of that with these upper floors. And quite frankly, they're only nine feet, which after gut work and utility lines and other things, it really gives you a peak in ceiling height. So we didn't really, we didn't want to disturb the existing condition, change the floor plates and get into all that. So that's kind of where it left us.
So to keep the character of this building, you went up the additional four and a half feet, correct?
Correct, yes.
We look at the next comment, it indicates with regard to the parapet. It states, proposed parapet also includes corners, which is designed to overhang the side of the building by two feet. This will create a two-foot encroachment to the right of way. And Cookman has the Mayfair Alley, Mayfair Way Alley requiring permission from the governing body. You agree it does create a two-foot encroachment, Mike, correct?
On the oning, yes. On the canopy, yes.
Which would require a right of way approval from the city of Asbury. Continuing on to page...
Just on that, what I think would be important is at some point, there's a diagram that identifies all of the right of way encroachments that you are proposing very clearly, because it's hard to pick up on the plans. But there should be something diagrammatic so that as a condition of approval, it's submitted to the planning board, but also used as a way to have a dialogue with the governing bodies.
Okay. Going to page five, there are certain recommendations with regard to the architectural plans. The first one is implied A, the after reconsider removal of the step parapet on the front facade, and instead develop way to integrate this feature into the upper floor design.
Yeah, so we, like I said, I love this building. I think it's one of, you know, the characteristics that sort of contribute to its existing uniqueness. But when we got into designing these upper floors for residential, this extra little bit kicked us into, I think it was about three and a half, almost three foot eight toward window height, which wouldn't be code for egress. And if you were sitting in a couch, you wouldn't be able to see out the window. So, you know, respectfully cut it down to, you know, the lowest of the front parapet. It was very much a struggle to maintain that herringbone pattern, to keep that, and, you know, the art of mix. So I think we gave it a lot of consideration, unfortunately.
Well, by eliminating that, you did add then to keep the consistency of that herringbone, that band around the third, fourth floor.
Yeah, I mean, I think we tried to do a good job establishing the existing building and meeting its character.
The next recommendation states, layout of the residential lobby, redesign permit a window on the Cookman at facade rather than a solid wall.
I, you know, I addressed that, Anthony addressed that. One of the key features, we think, for the residential, you know, tenants these days is to have a secure place to drop packages. We didn't want, you know, the postman or FedEx guys having access to the deeper into the building. So we made that front area a closet, that was our first thing. And as I mentioned, I really attempted to look at the street makeup and I realized that many of the residential portions of these buildings have a similar characteristic and wanted to keep that. That being said, on clear drawings and renderings, we could easily include a window, a glass element to the door, which would allow some, some light in. But I do think it's a design to service if we add a window, you know, to that, kind of interfere with that residential portion versus commercial.
So just so we're clear, what you're suggesting is you'll, you'll add a window to the door to get some natural light into that space?
Yes, yes.
Well, there's a transom above the door as well. So you're talking about, you know, because it's a high C four Z, right? So you're going to have where that's recessed, where the door, yeah, I mean, it's going to be about twelve foot five.
How far the recess would be recessed?
How big is the recess?
Two, three?
So, yeah, it's like three foot six.
Why don't we, let's give the measurement of the solid wall.
But in other words, I just want to make sure that we're clear on any conditions that the board makes.
So the, yeah, and then your subdivision.
Four. Four from the face of the building to the face of the door.
It's four feet?
Yes.
And what is the width of that solid wall that we're looking at?
Seven foot area.
You're talking to just a seven foot?
Right here.
And then you're hitting the door?
Yes.
And so that has the I page.
E page.
E page. So treatment with the signage and the planter box, and then the slit where the recesses, that's glass, you have the transom of the door. So you do get, you do get light, but we're still trying to...
Well, it's like four feet, it's recessed four feet, you're not really getting very much natural light. And the thing is, you're, you're creating this space, this isn't existing space, so...
This area, no.
Right, so I, I mean, it seems like you could make an attempt to redesign that lobby area so that you can get a window on the street. I mean, part of, part of the, the whole reason is you want to have, you know, transparency along and activity and invigorate the street space. And you have a wall that just kind of defeats, you know, what we're trying to achieve. And if you're creating that, and it's a brand new space, it's not something you're trying to have to adapt. So it seems like you have the ability...
We did, I just tried to describe why I thought the residential should sort of decompress. So in, in the, you know, for me, in urban environments, it's about the back brick, it's about compression and decompression. So there's lots of openings, and then there's some solids and openings and solids. And that's sort of, you know, the, the idea behind, I think, urban environment that does have residential attached to it. So it should feel, to me, different. That doesn't mean this can't be treated differently, but that, that was the intent behind it, is to say, there's the store, this is the private part for the residential area.
I mean, maybe there's options that could be a large window, maybe could be, you know, some smaller vertical windows or something, some kind of, to allow some natural light into the space.
Or a transom or something. Or not.
Not at all.
On bottom of architecture.
You're working on wrong. You were doing so well.
Should have stopped way longer.
In the, in the floor plan right now, that's a bathroom, right?
What's that?
A sludge.
That's a claw for, for package storage. It can be modified, or if that's the...
Right, so that's something that's... Just has to be split.
I think it makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah, I was just describing, we were trying to keep people right there and get out.
Continuing on, the next comment on page five, planner's report is eliminate use of defis for the rear and side east building facade.
So we are open to that. Unfortunately, we felt on that back facade, that really doesn't face, you know, a street. And on the upper portion of the adjoining property line, that this was a inexpensive way to address that. Now with that, we added these panels of color, you know, similar tone, in different shape, again, to keep in line with the design concept of things that are, you know, in movement. So we can address that if it's really something the board does not want on that facade.
Does the board have any comments?
I mean, I think it's, I think it's commendable that the architect even thought about the rear of the building and, and is doing something. So, I mean, definitely for the rear, I don't have a problem with something a little more inexpensive. I can be convinced on that.
Well, even the upper, just so you know, the upper two floors on the rear, the upper two floors on the rear facade, this is all the same materials that wrap around the floor. Yeah, it's, this is really existing on the existing conditions.
Right, right, right.
Right. And again, that sort of stems from our taking these panels and incorporating them, so I just try to apply, talk effectively, you know, method to wrap it up.
The next comment is provide... The next comment is provide additional information about projecting panels to determine architectural significance.
Which panels we talked about?
When you look at, when you look at the elevations, it appears that these things are projecting. I mean, maybe talking about, not necessarily panel, but those boxes. They look like, when you look at it in the front elevation, they look like these wings coming in. It's not, it's hard to get our heads around that.
So those are only twelve inches deep? They were eighteen? They were eighteen?
Is that true, referring to like the entire main window kind of?
Right, correct, correct. This was, this is made out of a countercoated steel. Fix of that line, that's just an outline. It's just all lying, that there was a bay or a projection.
Hold on a second.
I have two conversations.
So those are the boxes you're talking about? That's, that's what we're trying to get at here.
Okay.
Now we understand. Why did you use two? Why did you do just two?
Why, why did I only do two?
Like maybe when the front-
Put more, I'll put more.
I'm just, I'm just curious what you're-
Um, it was just a balance thing, it's, it's, it was just a balance thing, yeah.
I have a question, I know you're going through this very systematically, but when you mentioned before that you always try to incorporate green design elements, but not go for lead. Can you talk a little bit more about what you did include here?
Well, most of that is handled in the construction document, you know, phase. This building, when you work for clients, you can't always spend all their money. As much as you'd like to try. But we're just very cognizant about the choices. We can, we could have built this out of concrete block, these upper additions. So it really comes down to making the decisions with using high-sear equipment for HVAC, making smart choices about all the mechanical systems, using the high-eased glass and all the tech equipment that would bring you towards a lead building. But at the end of the day, this is an income-producing property for them and only can spend, you know, as much as we can. So with that being said, it'd be white roofing material and again, keeping this only light in terms of glare, that, those sort of things, just trying to follow as many principles as we can without. That's why I'm not up here saying that this is going to be a green building. We'll try to emphasize and define the choices that they can afford to make.
And that, um, the E pay on this is really E pay this time?
This is really E pay this time, yes, this time it is.
And is that something that you would consider the, um, getting for asking or pushing for a certified E pay?
I think for the amount that we have on there, I think that happens, sure, yeah.
Although I guess it might be a little bit less if there's a window.
I, I think the design is fantastic. I, I love that it really pulls some of the elements from the old building into the new. But, and, and still looks like a modern building on top of that, but it flows really well nicely together. I actually like the overhang on the building. There's a couple of buildings further down on Cookman which have it already. So it, it kind of, you know, it fits right in the context of the street. And I think this intersection and, and with the Merchant Park, it's so important visually. And, uh, I think it's phenomenal. The only, the only thing that kind of bugs me, and I don't know if the board agrees, is the, is the planter boxes. It looks, it just seems like they, I don't know, they just don't fit, yeah. Especially on the, on the existing lower two floors on that second floor. Just because that's the only thing that's different from the original building. I don't know, it kind of takes away from it. But that's my only critique, I think otherwise it's a phenomenal design.
I speak up for the planter boxes, I actually like the planter box.
Again, the idea of like throwing one, pulling it down. It's about not only bringing this up, but how you bring that back down. So you do like take that box.
I do like the design, but I have a question. Moving the entrance of the building to, to the west side? That's a very active driveway. But did you have any concerns about the safety of the patrons going in and out?
Something that I, I think we didn't address, but is good to consider for sure, is we could put bollards here, which would certainly, and may have come up during the construction drawing process and the review with the building department. But we could put something here to protect anyone from that. But we did think it was really important to bring this door to that, to that face, just for a little bit of a change. If it was something that the board wanted us to consider, we can consider putting a railing in there. But they could still get in there and it visually pulls you in. So it's not, you don't have to walk across that.
Sorry, I, I would suggest that from a standpoint of experience, your experience coming from Main Street onto Cookman, it really turns it and faces you as you're entering, because that's the gateway to Cookman there. So actually, I think it's a real great idea. And it, and if you're waiting for your car to be returned when you're at Brando's, you have a place to wait out of the rain out whenever the bell rings.
I think a lot of thought went into this design, but the elements and the layout.
I do like the idea of having some bollards there though, just in case somebody, it's a tight turn and somebody's not making that, whether somebody's unfamiliar or somebody's going too fast.
Well, well, what's the difference?
I think, so I like the planter, I'm just telling you, because your, your real estate value here is benefiting from its proximity to a park, which a lot of volunteers have put a lot of work into. So I hope you also think about that, just about how your real estate value is increased because of how lovely that park is. And I think that you should continue some of the greenery in, in both that window display. So if it's, if it's, you know, a traffic control measure that also is a planting, I think that would be great. For that reason, I do like the planting boxes.
The planter box, heavy planter box.
The arrangement of the, of the planters, because they're not symmetrical and they're not all in the same place, creates, along with the, the horizontal elements kind of breaking intermittently with the, with the vertical elements, creates more of a dynamic facade, which is very interesting.
Yeah.
All right, I take my planter back, planter box comment back. But what is the, what is the width of, from, from that front Cookman wall to the column and then from the column to the driveway? Do you know? I just want to make sure that if we, if we do end up restricting people from walking or accessing that, you know, that's wide enough.
Which, which direction is that? Is that two, two-way street, two-way alley?
No, it's a one-way alley. South, yeah. Uh, no, sorry, the width, that, yeah, and then, and then the sidewalk. I guess the sidewalk's, what, five feet probably?
Three, six.
Or, oh, three, six, oh, it's narrow. It's too narrow anyway really for ADA access or anything. So maybe that should be, you know, a planter box to kind of prevent people from going that way. But what's the, and what's the width between the, the building and the column? Six, okay.
Can you just, can you just go over, I know that, that we've mentioned that there was like a two-foot encroachment. It's hard to tell on these, on these drawings that, or these, these renderings, why you need that extra two feet, because it seems as though just from the renderings that it seems like you wouldn't need the extra two feet.
So-
But it's hard to tell.
Sure, we're talking about the upper.
I'm talking about the one that says seven twenty-two. No, no, this is, we're talking about the two-foot, um, parapet that includes the corners. Oh, oh, okay, okay, okay. Okay, got it.
Just the separate element.
Do you have those other samples of like the cloud, you said you had a, yeah. I know they're less than eighteen inches. I know, I want to have their less than eighteen inch. Did you look at any other ways to bring in the, um, that stepped character of the parapet? Even if you can't do it right there?
No, did we look at, I looked at how we can make it work with it, but I didn't look at how we can achieve it in some other way. At a certain point, especially when you're working with these existing conditions, you do have to retrofit it or something. Again, this is more about the code, how it was with a pgress. You know, sitting down on the couch isn't necessarily a code issue, but, you know, we, it's pretty painstaking. We took the time to think what, and we wanted to do that, hold it on the floor.
Just so the board is aware, eight fourteen inch to fifteen, the cloud, the passing rail.
I like, I, I mean, I agree with Jennifer, that, that, that parapet, that cigarette rod is kind of a characteristic for art deco architecture, it's really kind of one of the key elements. But I understand why you took it down, but I like that you put the herringbone above it to try to compensate for removing something.
And the little nuance, which may or not be a consequence. We did step the new pattern down, the, the new portion down, then again, sort of. You know, we have a lot later from there, we definitely thought a lot about that. These windows already are, you know, significantly about eighteen inches smaller.
You, you testified that the, uh, the height from the roof to the head of the elevator, elevator housing was just slightly above, just how slightly above, uh, the, the parapet is?
On this drawing here, you can see where it pops up?
In reality.
There's a difference of eighteen inches.
So it's eighteen inches above the, uh-
Above the parapet for just the portion of where the elevator is.
And what's the, what's the height of the parapet?
Three foot six.
It's fifty percent more, so it's not slightly above, it's substantially above.
Well, it's eighteen inches, it pops up above.
You're not going to see it though.
You're allowed by code to go up.
You're not going to see it from the street.
But the, slightly was. How do you get to the basement from your, the basement storage from the retail space at seven twenty-four?
Again, we considered, uh, building the portion of the building that was torn down already, a full basement, that's too costly of a feature that the owners do not want to get into. So if you live in a building, you come down the elevator and the stairs, you go down the back alley or the front alley, you access that covered existing stairway. And they share this common stair into the basement where retail would have access to their storage and tenants of the residential area would have access to their storage.
And that's existing access present?
You're saying that the stairway at the southwest corner of the building is into the basement?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So the, anybody in the retail space has to go outside to access that?
No, the retail would have their own lock, code, you know, special lock just for them and they can get in there. When you get into the basement, all of the individual storage areas are locked and, and or caged by themselves.
Okay, your retail storage area is to the, the front of the building, all the way to the, uh, the north side, right?
Correct.
So you have to go to the rear of the building, down the stairs, and then all the way back to get to your storage?
From the store?
Yeah.
If you, if you were in the store, right? Who knows what this will be, but if this was a shoe store, they, they would have, they could have storage here. If they had longer-term needs, they would go downstairs, which is pretty typical. That was existing, but this door exists just like this now.
Yeah, okay. And how, and is there a basement underneath that?
Yes.
Okay, and how's the access from that store now?
Both ways, we didn't change that. You can go through, you can go through a door.
Yeah.
Or assume that that's used to be for delivery
Okay.
in the alley, you can go in that door and go into the basement.
Okay, and now, now you've changed, you've cut off all that area from almost the middle of the building to the south end? So that anybody using, who has that retail space on the first floor, goes back all the way to the south of the building, down the stairs, now all the way to the front of the building, correct?
Oh, oh, is it? Are you referencing this? So in terms, yes, I'm sorry, I was confused up here. So in terms of the store having to come down to access their long-term storage? A lot of businesses don't have any storage.
It's thirty-five feet.
There's, there's a hallway there that you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. That's your access, okay, I'm just trying to figure out what it is, that's all.
Okay, I was confused, my apologies.
Let me look at the retail space. So this new retail storage for the basement would be in addition to its existing storage on the front door and behind the garage.
Correct, yes.
Is this on the corners and?
That is, correct.
Okay.
And that's the upper cap and the lighter, or the sort of lighter portions below it.
Okay, and this stripe that's going down the side, is this?
Uh, this, this particular one? Yeah, he's got, yeah, again, trying to create that flipping inside.
Continuing on with the retail. Going to page seven of the report. Three A, we're again talking about the planner's report, three twelve for identification. On page seven. Three A, there are certain recommendations. The first one states, space at the rear of the building should be redesigned to provide better access by residents, ideally access to residential storage during the basement. We provide from within the building. Trash storage, the retail space, we provide at ground level as well. We've already gone through the storage, why don't we address the trash storage where that's going to be both for the residents and for the retail store?
Uh, in terms of the residential storage, we touched upon, in terms of the trash, you know, I think we provided, you know, adequate space for, uh, the amount of units for recycling and garbage. In terms of the renovated retail space, not knowing what the tenant use would be. If it's a shoe store, can they want to carve out an area on their floor? They could, we wanted to provide, most, most things that work around here are restaurants. We figured we would separate that garbage EB, because we both need to provide by private haulers. So, you know, we, we felt it was the best use of the space. Again, we, we didn't, you know, we couldn't afford to dig that area down and re-store it.
Is the trash rooms that are being provided both for the residential and for the retail store sufficient to handle the fashionism of the building?
We think so, especially with the willingness of the owners to do the private haul.
And then you can arrange depending upon the needs.
Three times a week, they'll get it three times a week.
In terms of recycling, is the area that's left to store sufficient to handle one waste, like the recycling? Continuing on, on three A, the next recommendation is electric meters should be enclosed and a meter closet either outside or inside the building.
I first met with both the electric company and the gas company and by no means do they want these meters enclosed inside downstairs. They want twenty-four, three hundred and sixty-five days a year access. You do see people covering them, they do not block that. One note that we had, we was going over this, this is our property. The building isn't a full hundred percent block line, so that is within our rights. But put that there, and then we add the bollards for more protection.
Continuing on on page nine, there's a question about signage. And states the act should advise whether the signs will be illuminated. As noted, we recommend providing window area in residential facade. We're going to address residential facade by in terms of signage. Tell whether or not the signs will be illuminated, if so, how that's going to occur.
Not, not illuminated.
What about illuminated?
They will be, they will be lit, but it will be-
How are they going to be done?
I think it was originally-
And the retail signage is just really a placeholder at this point?
Are we talking, yeah, I was, I was talking about the residential, sorry. The retail is, like Anthony said, it's just a placeholder for future tenant, although at this time, they have to comply.
We're not going to do interiorized signs. It's going to be a classy, one-term kind of retail experience, correct? What about- What about the residential?
Sorry, residential sign, illuminated, right?
Sorry, is it a box?
No.
There's not, we've got somebody speaking caught in the road, so.
LEDs lit from within the actual lettering.
Okay. And we've gone through, ready to screen in Adrian's seat. Going now to the insight report, which is from Mark and Steve, 13th identification. On page two, comment three talks about the feasibility of various rooftop components, we're ready to address, which please, I'll deal with, we have an engineer testify. Nine, trash, we've already discussed that, signage, it's number 10. Going to considerations on page four, comment eighteen, test lawyers required to verify whether the proposed roof canopy and proposed planters shown on the plans will be included in the city right away.
We discussed the planters, now, are we going to the planters, sorry, the planter is the planter in front of the building, drawn here, it's a removable, not attached to anything, this is the particular planter, Corten Steel Planter Box, that would sit in front of the solid wall, again, that's really justified.
Is that going to be within the city right away?
Uh, yeah, it will be in the city right away.
So it'd require approval by the mayor council, am I correct?
Correct.
Number nineteen, just ask for revision, it's the plan board, the resident union board, and I believe that's all of the architectural comments that we require.
Any questions from the board?
The, where the signage is for the retail, what's going on with that van, like the straights and covers?
Again, it was sort of a rendered element at the time, I would, I would say, I would tend to do it like Corten Steel element, it kind of got a little misrendered, I would still say that would be on the tenant to incorporate this element as part of the condition for sign.
The, um, you're talking about in the alley, the, there's a, a portion that's still within the property line of the building, right?
There's a.
That's, that's right now empty?
Yes, right.
Um, would there be enough room to potentially include bicycle storage for residents? Potentially? Is it, is it a couple feet, I mean, is it?
It's three, it's three foot six, I mean, the depth of the meters and the way that the code reads, you're not supposed to cover the first three feet of a meter length, so I tried to put two bike racks up, but there was too much stuff going on. Although be like storage for them down there, but if you're going somewhere, you want to tie up real quick, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, they can do it to the meters, but we can't really tell you that it could happen that way.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from our professionals that we covered?
I'm just going to say one more time, I think it's going to be a great addition to this area of the street, because that building right now is such an eyesore, and it's right in front of the beginning of Cookman, it just really sets a nice, nice view, it's really pretty.
I can try to get through the engineering.
Yes, just, just one second, let's, I'm going to propose that we, uh, finish off this piece with public comment, public question, public comment, and then the engineering, because we're sitting at the 10 o'clock hour, that we bring the engineering back.
There's only one thing I want to address before we conclude for the nine, it's really a legal thing having to do with parking, there is no parking on the site, um, there's a comment as to whether or not the, when you look at the plan for the redevelopment zone, the Cookman Ave Corps is included within the, by allowing a payment into the fund. Um, I've never had an issue with regard to the Cookman Ave Corps whereby payment was not allowed to be made into the parking fund, in fact, on page three, it states on there, that's one of the three options that's allowed, and specifically identifies the Cookman Ave Corps. Um, there was an amendment that was done a number of years ago that allowed for studios on the Cookman Ave Corps that include the language also, that you can pay into the fund, so I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, my view and my interpretation that the code has always allowed payment into the fund into the Cookman Ave Corps.
That's for the 14 spaces. Um, do we have, uh, any questions from the public?
Of the witness.
Of the witness by the public.
You can cross-examine the witness. Looking at me possibly.
You could question the witness.
No, just letting you know.
Okay.
You're asking questions, you're not making a comment, so you.
I don't need to be under oath?
No, not to ask a question, because you're not making a statement.
Okay, um, the units, was there nine of them? They're not subject to any kind of, uh, middle income, they're not part of also.
A rural house, another one, it has to be asked.
Oh, wait, I, I thought I was asking him.
It's a legal question that you're asking.
He's the attorney, he can, he can ask that.
Oh, he can do that, okay.
And our board planner also answered.
Right, right, let me just clarify, the housing plan element was adopted, the housing plan element must, the only way it can become law is if an ordinance is passed after that, there's been no ordinance passed after the housing plan was adopted yet, so that hasn't happened yet, so there's no obligation for any sort of affordable or middle income in the CBD. In the CBD, or in this particular case at all.
Yet. Yet. Okay, and, uh, we open for public comment, please.
No, no.
What?
Don't, not till you have patience, no.
Oh, my God.
Because there's your engineering.
Okay, fine, okay, anything else? We're done? Okay, so we're going to, uh, have you come back to finish up the engineering?
What date?
It looks like you can come back on the 25th if you're available, if you're not available on the 25th, then it's April 22nd is the next available time.
April 22nd.
April 22nd for a continuance.
Motion to that effect, without further notice.
Second. April 22nd.
7:00 PM, without further notice.
7:00 PM, no further notice.
Thank you for your time.
Michael, you moved it.
No, who moved it?
His birthday, is it?
Who?
I second it.
I moved that we carry the application to April 22nd without further notice.
Yes.
Second.
Aye.
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 Okay, we have one other item, just to, just to, we're not going to talk about it. Okay, all right, there's a resolution that was on the agenda regarding the amendment to the, uh, the city master plan for a portable housing element, we are waiting until the actual document comes back from the planners, so that we can review the language that they are adding, and then, so we're hoping that that happens the next meeting. I don't think we'll, we have a motion. We're not motioning. Thank you. I second it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.